I would like to start today's meeting with a roll call, please.
Mayor Seaman?
Here.
Councilmember Bregel?
Here.
Councilmember Bauer?
Here.
Councilmember Arroyo?
Here.
Councilmember Moulton? Councilmember, Councilmember Castellano?
Here.
Councilmember Moulton is absent.
All right, would you please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and the United Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Mr. City Attorney. Is that what I call you now? I just realized that. Mr. Visiting City Attorney.
Oh, you can still call me City Attorney. If you want to throw in deputy, you can throw that in too.
Do you, do we have a report out from closed session, please?
No final actions to report out of closed session.
All right, thank you very much. So we have a few presentations today. Okay, and we are going to start. It is the 30th anniversary of our Sister City relationship with Kamisu. And we have Jay Tillman, who I believe was involved, not 30 years ago, clearly. But you were involved with one of the Sister City projects. So you want to come up and talk about what's happening now?
All right, I did have a. Miles got it for me. Thanks, Miles. No worries. So yeah, I was involved with the Sister City project back in 2008. I was part of the last student exchange to get a chance to go to Kamisu when I was in middle school. So I was just 14 years old, I think. And sadly, that was the last student exchange to take place. So still here trying to bring it back and kind of restore that back to what it used to be. So hopefully give some updates on what we've been doing with the project so far and sort of where we're hoping to take it into the future. So I know I sent you a.
And I would like to add that Councilmember Moulton has been working really hard on this. And she is not able to be here tonight. But all of the good work that Jay is doing is being done with the assistance of Councilmember Moulton, for which I'm very grateful.
Yeah, so I'm sure you all recognize these up here on the board here, probably familiar to everybody. So I've been really thinking about these different categories as far as like how we're taking the project into the future. And around there, you can see Kamisu Kokoko-kun. He is Kamisu's mascot, so their city mascot. So he comes in all sorts of little character tours. So I like to put him on all of our slides and things like that. So he is the shape of Iberaki Prefecture, which is where Kamisu is located. And Kokoko means here, kind of in Japanese. So he points to where Kamisu is in the prefecture. So that little red part of his head is where Kamisu is. So but so I hit it one time. Do you have to? We're locked on the screen, I guess. There it goes. So these are just some like project updates that we've been doing so far. Our big one is the Pen Pal Project that's been happening with Alder Grove Charter School. We sort of created a little partnership between Kamisu and Alder Grove to exchange pen pal letters. And right now, we have 14 students involved as well as some community members outside of that small group. And we're hoping to expand that in the future to other schools and hopefully encourage more students to get involved. Right now, it's mostly younger students, grade school through about middle school. So I'd like to expand that more in the future. But we've also got together a pretty active little committee. And it's also become a dream maker project of the Ink People. So that's been a big help to just like the financial side of things and like figuring all that out. Because I don't know much about running a nonprofit. I'm learning, but I'm still in that process. So and then we've partnered with Happy, the Humble Asian Pacific Islanders, for the Obon Festival that was back in August. And that was super successful and we had a lot of fun and hoping to plan more events like that in the future. I'd love to bring something like that to Eureka on the waterfront, maybe, which would be really cool to see. The Obon Festival is a traditional Japanese festival that takes part, takes place in the summer season mostly across Japan. And it's a really, if anybody had a chance to go, it's very fun. Definitely encourage everybody to check it out next year when that happens again. So and a lot of us were kind of starting from scratch. So I've been building up kind of a new community of people that are engaged in the project and trying to sort of broaden our reach per se and get people engaged with sort of this global community. So as you can see over on the side, there's some pictures of some of the students that were involved and our little mailbox and stuff and our booth at Obon Festival and whatnot. So yeah, so I guess going on to the next slide. If my thingy works. It seems to kick me out every time, probably because I sent a PDF, huh? There we go. So future plans, we have a whole bunch of stuff. I just want to kind of gloss over some things and then I want to give you guys time to ask questions. If you have any questions about what's been happening. The biggest thing we're hoping and well, we're planning on having a like a community video call on the 17th at 6:00 PM that are inviting community members in Eureka, in the greater Eureka area, to join us and chat with folks in Kamisu and giving a chance to just sort of start bridging that connection and getting people involved with the program. So I extend an invitation out to everybody here. If you'd like to join us, just let me know. It's going to be, it's going to be fun. I'm excited to sort of put some faces to names and names to faces of everybody that we've been talking to via email for a long time. So if we have this technology, we can use it across countries too. So I'm very excited to be hosting that. In the future, we're hoping to do more art exchanges and some gallery shows and of course fundraisers and stuff. Expanding the Pen Pal Project, of course. We'll also be hosting Japanese language classes coming up. They're going to be open to the community about mid-April, I think, is when we're going to start. We're going to run kind of a trial run and then start opening up to have people can come and take Japanese classes. And that will offer also a chance for people to connect with folks over in Kamisu and learn, you know, learn that way too, have a sort of a formally established pen pal for language learning stuff. So of course, there's a lot more to this. As you see up on the list or up on the PowerPoint, bringing in, you know, thinking about the exchange program. I would love for the Sister City Project to be able to send students to Kamisu, kind of sponsor students to go on this exchange. When I went in 2008, we each of us had to raise four grand in order to go on this trip for two weeks. I'd like to be able to have the project be able to support the students to go without having to necessarily pay that amount of money. So that's kind of my goal as far as just supporting the project and then supporting the students to get involved with it. And yeah, that's, it's a lot of what I had condensed down. So if anybody had any specific questions, I can answer the best I can.
So I was going to, when our Japanese delegation came in 2018 or 2019, early 2019, the hope was that we would be able to have an exchange in late 2020 or 2021. As you know, things didn't work out that well. So there was a discussion. And this is really good work to make sure that we continue to keep that on our radar. And these Japanese exchange programs, all of these cultural exchange programs are really important to help people understand, you know, these are communities that are similar to ours. They might have similar economies, similar environmental issues. And it really just makes the world much smaller. So I appreciate that you're doing this. Does anybody else have any questions or comments? Councilmember Arroyo?
Just it would be really interesting to learn more about. I know that Kamisu is, as you have a wind turbine here. There's quite a lot of wind energy generation in that part of Japan. And even though their facilities look different than what we're likely to see off our coast, it would be really interesting to learn more about that and to kind of understand how the community has embraced that or not and how they've handled any of the challenges with it. So that would be a cool thing to set up a time to talk with them about and learn from them.
That would be awesome. And one other thing I wanted to mention too, just real quick about the project in general is that my hopes for it is that it can support a lot of other projects within Eureka to sort of showcase, you know, all the awesomeness that is this area, you know, and be able to more or less be that supporting factor to not necessarily like plan our own events and things like that, but like support other groups' events and to showcase that with our friends in Kamisu and show them, you know, all the cool stuff that happens. So I think that's a kind of a direction that I feel like the program should take. So yeah.
Well, I really appreciate that you have stayed involved and over all these years. I mean, you're really making this your kind of your keystone project. And I think that we're going to see good things. So that's really exciting. Thank you. Oh, Leslie, our Councilmember Castellano.
I just didn't say because our youth council is here. I also could imagine future collaboration with the youth council in terms of exchange with Kamisu. Or, you know, they're kind of our ambassadors, you know, for the city of Eureka. So something.
That'd be very cool. Great. All right, thank you, guys.
Thank you so much. Next, I would like to invite up Janine Lancaster from the Humboldt County Library. This is officially my last meeting. Except for it's a very slow death. So I have this meeting and then we'll have a special meeting and then I'll have the next meeting where I swear in. Councilmember Bregel and then, but this is the last official meeting. And I thought, what is it that I want to bring to hear about? And I started really wanting to talk about the library when I first got into office. And I wanted to end with the library because it is such an important and often overlooked resource in our community. And I just think every once in a while, we just need to think about how important it is again. So and Janine, can you tell me how, before you even start, how long have you been at the library?
It depends, 25 years to.
25 years, how much longer are you going to be at the library?
Oh, four more days.
Right on.
Saturday is my last day, so yeah.
So we get a very special presentation today from Janine before she takes off and retires and does wonderful things.
Who knows?
With her, with her family. So please tell us what is going on.
Okay, thank you for inviting me here. I'm here on behalf of the library and especially of Chris Cooper, our Director of Library Services, who unfortunately cannot make it tonight, but he sends his best wishes to the city. The Humboldt County Library's mission statement is, oh, we strengthen our community by educating, inspiring, and connecting people. So how do we do that? Well, that depends. The answer has changed a bit recently. In response to the pandemic, we closed down our Eureka Main Library in our 10 branches and grounded the bookmobile. And we opened for curbside service in 2020 and expanded our virtual resources, eBooks, including audiobooks and databases as well, largely funded by the Humboldt Library Foundation. In 2021, then we were able to open for limited in-person open hours. And in 2022, we are now back to our full pre-pandemic hours everywhere with some additional hours in some of our branches. So it's been, we're really glad to be back in that sense. We shifted also in 2020 from our regular slate of programs for children, teens, and adults to solely virtual offerings, Storytime, book clubs, Historical Society, presentations, all went online. And then in 2021, we had some outdoor in-person programs. And now we're back to indoor in-person programs. So we can have Storytime and book clubs and family literacy parties and craft activities for children and adults, Lego parties, creative dance programs, and all kinds of engaging activities for all kinds of people in the library. In Eureka and in our branches as well. We still are doing some of the things that we did during the pandemic. Some of our programs are still virtual, some are hybrid. And we found that really allows us to reach people who are not able to come to the library at the time of our program, whether it's because they prefer not to drive in the dark or they're just further from Eureka. The Historical Society programs in particular, we're so popular in Eureka that our meeting room only seats 80. So sometimes we had to arrange for the speaker to do it twice in the same day. And with Zoom, that's not a limitation, so everybody gets to come. We have also continued some of the popular services. When we were doing curbside service, we started offering grab bags. People, of course, can choose their own books and select some to put on hold and get specific titles. But now people can call or go on our website and say, well, I don't, you know, I don't even know what I want. I like mysteries, but I don't want any that are too scary and please no cats, just no cats. And we can put together a bag of books for them, for them to come in and pick up. So the services of materials to check out, of people to come in and ask questions of or call and ask questions of, the programs are all continuing. We, the base for that, the support for all that, it depends on that work that we think is important to do to strengthen the community and the library by helping to build community infrastructure. So our library's strategic plan is based on the county framework and on extensive input from the community. I have copies I can leave behind for those who would like some light reading later in the evening. And our system, our network of libraries, that those 10 branches are supported by the cities in which they're located. In some cases, Arcata, Blue Lake, Ferndale, Fortuna, Trinidad, sometimes by other community organizations. So in Hoopa, it's the tribe. In McKinleyville, it's the Community Service District. In Riadale, the Volunteer Fire Department offers the building at a reduced rate for us. And some cities offer more budgetary help and some offer wonderful services of other kinds. For instance, in Eureka, we know we depend very much on the Eureka Police Department. They, when we need help, they send officers who are thoughtful and kind and help take care of patrons and staff, and we really appreciate that. We work with the Community Services Department, with the park next door. We also, we're all geared up for special programs in 2020 and we'll work our way back to those. We partner with the Sequoia Park Zoo. Because of the Zoo Foundation and donors, we're able to offer free zoo passes for families to pick up at our libraries. And we partner with county departments and all kinds of community organizations like that Humboldt Historical Society and Humboldt Literacy Project and North Coast Children's Services. Just trying to find all those connecting points where people come to the library and they encounter someone from an organization presenting a program or sharing information and they realize how much else there is out there in the community for them. So we are able to do that because of dedicated supporters. Property tax provides the largest portion of our funding. But we also seek, of course, alternative revenue streams, as does everyone, right? With the federal, state, and local grants. That Humboldt Library Foundation that just had a big party last night to raise money for the library. The Friends of the Redwood Libraries raised money for the whole system. There are Friends groups in every branch. So anyone who lives somewhere other than Eureka, you are invited to get involved in your local Friends group or the one here. We have lots of volunteers. We have individual donors. And in the children's room in the Eureka Library, we have a plywood and plexiglass dinosaur named Rhettosaurus Rex. And he eats coins that children put in for us and then we take the money out and buy books. Rex advises us, he has a preference for dinosaur books. Yeah, seems to be skewing our collection a little bit. Speaking of skewing the collection and making those decisions, library users and patrons can help us develop the collection through our Zipbook Program. So if there's a book you want that is not in the library, that meets the criteria for the program, needs to be at least a year old and under a certain cost threshold, we can purchase that book for you and have it shipped to your house. And then you get to read it, be the first one to read it. You bring it back to the library and generally we add it to the collection. So maybe there's something that the librarians and Rex haven't thought of and you can help us figure that out. So all that information is available on your website or by calling your friendly local library. So what do we do with all those connections and all that support? We have ongoing partnerships and programs like with First Five Humboldt, for example. They help us do outreach to preschools and playgroups and community events, serving young children and their families. We work with the Author Festival every couple of years to bring all those authors to Humboldt County. And we are engaged in a number of new projects. So the city of Eureka and the cities of Fortuna and Arcata helped by applying for building forward grants that will pay for some critical infrastructure improvements to the libraries in those communities. Kind of boring things like boilers and, well, solar panels in Fortuna, maybe that's not boring. But they really are important things that keep the libraries functioning so we can keep the doors open so we can do fun things. So thank you for your support with that. We are developing a new program called Library at Your Door that will allow us to actually deliver books to people who are unable to come to libraries. The Library Foundation has raised the money for a new van, which is working its way through the county process. Miles per hour are very slow when working with that kind of thing, but it's coming. And that program is in development, so we're hoping to get more books and movies and CDs and things in people's hands. In Hoopa, we're developing a library of things, kind of a pilot project for the whole system. So people there will be able to check out fishing gear, gardening tools. There will be programs led by community facilitators. So we're really hoping to draw heavily on local traditional knowledge in the people who get to come and use the things, but also in making those connections with the community and learning from one another. We're looking to get back into some projects we were working on in 2019 with workforce development, with the economic development folks in the city and the county. We have new staff and that's exciting. That slowed down a little bit through the pandemic, but we have new staff in Eureka and new branch managers in Ferndale and Garberville and Trinidad. A new youth services outreach coordinator who's doing exciting things. So there's a lot of kind of ferment of excitement. So I guess that's a good time to go is when, when things are really happening. We have a new catalog look too, so there, you know. You can check out our website, you can come to see us in person. You can go to an event where the library is hosting things and we would love to have you all. Oh, and it's a special just for people here today. Oh, no, I guess not. Free library card, free library card. If you come in, we'll give you a free card. Yeah. Or I guess we charge for replacement cards. But anyway, you are all welcome. And if you have questions, I can answer them, some, yes, maybe.
No, I would say that getting a library card is a great New Year's resolution. So easy and just something that you could really be like, yeah. Yeah, so if you don't have it or if you can't find it.
You can use it throughout the county. You can download eBooks and then you never have to worry about returning them late. They just disappear from your device.
That's true. Last night, the Humboldt Library Foundation hosted an event. And I was so excited that there were so many folks there. So Councilmember Castellano was there and Councilmember Arroyo and Councilmember Bauer. And we had three supervisors from the Board of Supervisors, which made me very happy that people are taking notice that library is a place where anybody can go. And anybody does go. So it doesn't matter your economic class, it doesn't matter either in your educational level. You know, you can go there and learn great stuff, including, you didn't mention the Humboldt Room. Where you can get incredible historic documents that you can't get anywhere else. So.
And the room is beautiful too.
And it's beautiful. The whole library is beautiful. If you just want to go sit and read a book or a newspaper, if you want to get ink on your fingers because nobody buys it anymore and look out the window, it is fantastic. And so we are very fortunate to have such a beautiful, well-stocked library. And so, yeah.
We'll be glad to see you all. And I will leave some copies of that report in case you'd like one.
Thank you. Next up, I would like to invite Dan Pamianco from Eddie Alexander to introduce our new local Eddie Alexander, another new local Eddie Alexander representative.
I'm glad you said another. I'm not going anywhere. I'm still here and I'll be able to focus a little bit more on content and some of the things that, you know, telling the good stories that are out there, talking about the great people in this city. But I am very pleased to introduce Kayla Quarter. She's a lifetime, lifelong Eureka resident and is really committed to the community. And it's only been a week and a half we've shared an office. But every time I turn around, she has a great suggestion or has thought of some marketing initiative that never occurred to me. So I'm confident you're in good hands with her as our Senior Accounts Manager. Like I said, I'll be around. You may, I may be a little more under the rug. You won't see me quite as much out there. But Kayla has went through a really rigorous hiring process that's taken some months, including a couple of interviews and a presentation to our entire staff. And she emerged as far and above the top candidate and I'm really happy to have her. I'll let her tell you a little bit more about herself.
Thank you.
Thank you for that introduction, Dan. Hi, everyone. My name is Kayla Quarter. I was born and raised here. I went through the local public schools and went on to Cal Poly Humboldt. I left for a little bit, came back and I got my degree in Business Administration with an emphasis in marketing. I was formerly the Director of Marketing at Bear River Casino. And I'm just very excited for this new role and I look forward to working with you. And I'm excited for where Eureka's at and where it's headed, so thank you.
Hey, I have a suggestion for Visit Eureka. The library is not on there.
It's not.
That's what I heard last night. So I said, oh, and I see at Alexander, I have to tell them. And I just remembered it when she walked away, I went, oh, perfect timing. We'll get that fixed. That's a problem. It's, yeah. Yeah. Thank you. Next up, I would like to invite Chief Jarvis to come up. We have a new gun buyback program that, you know, we would, we're very excited to have happen. After, I think we started talking about this after there was some significant gun violence in the country last year and continues to be. And so whatever we could do, Chief Jarvis.
Hi, thank you, Mayor. Yes, this is in response to some interest that you showed in a program after the Valde school shootings. And we've had several since then throughout this country. And we're trying to put this together so that we can get this done while you're still the mayor and facilitate this. I also want to thank Finance and Lee Millar for helping us with this. But the plan is on December 18th at the Warfinger Building from. But the plan is on December 18th at the Warfinger Building from 10:00 in the morning till 3:00 in the afternoon. We will have Eureka Police Department officers on site. We would like anyone who has any unwanted firearms that they just don't have use for, that they have in their home or a business that they would like to relinquish to law enforcement to bring them down. We're going to provide gift cards for people that bring functional firearms to us. $100 for any handgun or assault rifle, $50 for any shotgun or rifle. Up to three per person. We'll have officers there to meet them. Please, if you do come down, just leave the firearm locked in your vehicle, make contact with the officers, they'll come down to the vehicle with you and they'll safely remove the firearm. This is no questions asked, we're not asking for ID. We will run each of the firearms once this is over. And if there's anything that's being reported stolen that's been turned in to us, we will try to track down the owner and return it if we can. If not, any of the firearms that are collected will be destroyed. This has been very successful in other communities and it's really, not to take guns away from people, but if people have unwanted firearms that they don't know what to do with, this is an avenue for them to relinquish them and know that they're going somewhere where they won't fall into the wrong hands. And it has proven to keep communities safer.
You mentioned functioning guns, what do people do if they have a gun that's not functioning or broken? What do you, how do you get rid of a gun?
They can still bring it to us, but they're not going to get a $100 gift card.
But at least you have some option to get rid, you can't just throw it in the trash can.
Correct. Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'd like to give credit to the rest of my council too. I think that was a pretty universal cry for everybody to do something, so. That was a pretty harrowing experience that I think made people feel like they needed to do something. So that is, that is it for the main part of my mayor's announcement. As I said, this is my last full meeting, I imagine I'll be able to say something before I swear came in. And I don't need to go on and on. So I am going to introduce the Eureka Youth Council for a presentation because they are also finishing out their term, so come on up. Community Services Coordinator Sierra Dillon will introduce and tell us what they've been doing, I'm sure they'll all get to talk as well.
Good evening, Council, so good to see all of you again. I am Sierra Spear Dillon and I am here with our Youth Council Supervisor Robin Prasker and our Assistant Jim Thomas, where are you, Jim? Over there.
I am the Eureka Youth Council Coordinator, it's been a wonderful year. These students are amazing, they're so bright and we've had so much fun and we've all learned a lot together. And we're excited to present to you some recent projects they've been working on and do a little recap of the year. And now I'm going to hand it over to Alexandra Nilson, she is going to start us off. Take it away Alexandra.
Good evening, City Council, my name is Alexandra Nilson and I am a senior at St. Bernans Academy and I'm a member of the Eureka Youth Council and I'm here to introduce our 2022 rapbook. So Eureka Youth Council is a unique program designed to give Eureka teens the opportunity to learn about local city government while working on projects that can have a positive impact within the community. Eureka Youth Council is made up of six students from Eureka High School, Zobarnum High School and St. Bernans Academy. And I am pleased to introduce these fabulous members as Asher Russo, Solve Lasan, Kate Fazio, Rory Bookmore and Rafael Hernandez. Our motto is "Learning today to lead tomorrow, Eureka's future leaders." And during this year, our members not only attended and excelled in academics and were a part of Youth Council, but we took part in extracurricular activities such as wrestling, golf and theater and were advocates for the arts, the environment and LGBTQ rights. And now for a brief recap for the first part of the year. This year, we learned about city government and different departments within the city. We learned how public meetings ran, how to understand an agenda and its components. We also wrote, developed and helped produce a recycling contamination PSA called Night of the Living Garbage. I don't know if you remember our monster coming out of the trash can, I'm glad we made a lasting impression. We also developed and distributed an online survey for local youth that was out for five weeks and we received 61 responses, which felt like a pretty good amount. We came up with all the questions, created our own flyer, we posted it online and throughout our schools. And this 35-question survey garnered a variety of results which we used for future decisions and engagement, which we will touch on later. Also, at the beginning of this year, we took a trip on the Medicaid while learning about some of the history of Eureka and Humboldt Bay. And of course, we presented to you, the Eureka City Council in the summer. And since we saw you last, we have been working on some very exciting projects and we are excited to share them with you. So now I will turn it over to Rafael Hernandez, thank you.
Thanks Alexandra. Good evening, Council, I'm Rafael Hernandez and I'd like to share a few recent projects that we've worked on that went along with current events in the area, with the first being our Zero Waste Project. So what is Zero Waste? We learned that zero waste can be defined as the conservation of all resources by means of responsible production, consumption, reuse and recovery of products, packaging and materials without burning or having discharges to land, water or air that threaten the environment or human health. We also learned more about the city programs Eco Eureka and Go Zero Eureka, with focus on zero waste and environmental initiatives and public outreach. We also learned of the five concepts of zero waste being refuse, know how to say no to what's not essential, reduce, adopt minimalist tendencies, recycle, process recyclable packaging and rot to compose all organic waste. And now here's Kate to share me more of how this topic influenced our next project, thank you.
Good evening, Council, I'm Kate Fazio, so you might be wondering, how can one reuse, repurpose or upcycle? Well, it's just the thought of getting creative and using something multiple times in a variety of ways instead of just throwing away, with the goal of reducing the amount of waste tossed into landfills and decreasing manufacturing needs. So after learning more about this concept, each member was responsible for selecting an item from home to repurpose it into something new, we call this repurposing around the house. Then Youth Council created a repurposing project display board for their items which was used in inspiration for the public at the City Zero Waste Day event that was in collaboration with the Recology Open House that took place on Saturday, November 12th. We repurposed a variety of items for new life, from torn socks to bottle caps. Now I'll turn it over to Solve to share more about our future projects, thank you.
Thank you, Kate, and good evening, Council, my name is Solve Lasan and tonight I will be telling you about Youth Council's experience making PSAs. Designed to raise awareness about social issues, PSAs are a great way to emphasize an important message. Over the last year, Youth Council made two PSAs. As Alex mentioned earlier, one of our PSAs, The Night of the Living Garbage, addressed recycling contamination. And our newest PSA raised awareness for holiday hunger and food insecurities in our city. So you might be wondering, what are food insecurities? A food insecurity can be defined as a state of being without reliable access to a sufficient quantity of affordable nutritious food. We know that people here in our community suffer from food insecurities and our youth survey provided further insight into that issue, which Asher will tell you about, thank you.
Thank you, Solve, good evening, Council, I am Asher Russo. Some of our questions in the youth survey were focused around food security. One being, do you feel you have access to enough nutritious food throughout the day? With 25% answering sometimes and almost 10% answering no, which definitely caught our attention. The next question regarding food was, what is your primary food source? And almost 22% answered school lunches. So you can imagine during the summer and over the holiday break, which is about to come up, that 22% of local youth is losing their primary food source. This led to the idea for our most recent project. Now here is Rory and she's going to tell you more, thank you.
Thank you, Asher, good evening, Council, I'm Rory Bickmore. So next, Youth Council developed a PSA to promote a local food drive while focusing on the effects of hunger in youth. Hunger in kids can lead to serious health concerns such as issues with language, motor skills and behavior, chronic illnesses, anxiety, depression and more. We filmed the PSA a few weeks ago during National Hunger and Homeless Awareness Week and chose to support Food for Peoples annual Humboldt Holiday Food Drive because as I'm sure you know, they're having a big holiday food drive happening right now. They're the food bank in our county and serve 10% of Humboldt's population. Our PSA is currently on the Eureka Community Services social media channels, playing on Access Humboldt TV Station and KZZH radio station, plus airing on all four Lost Coast Communications radio stations. We'd like to give a special thanks to all those outlets for airing our PSA. Now let's check out our PSA, we hope you enjoy it.
Did you know around one in six kids go hungry during their holiday break?
We can all relate to the pain of an empty stomach. But for kids, hunger creates not only physical concerns, but delays in development on the cognitive, social and emotional level.
And lowers self-esteem and can lead to depression, anxiety and other mental health issues.
But we want to help change this statistic.
And ensure no kid in Humboldt goes hungry this holiday season.
And you can help, there's many ways to donate this holiday season.
And help local nonprofits serve our community.
We're Eureka Youth Council.
And we're asking you to donate to Food for Peoples annual holiday food drive.
No one deserves to go hungry, so remember.
You can make a difference.
Find out more at foodforpeople.org.
This message was brought to you by the city of Eureka.
Speaking of which, we'll also be volunteering at the Holiday Food Drive drop-off and donate event. So make sure to stop by and visit us and donate if you can. It's this December, December 8th, from 3:00 to 6:00 PM at Eureka's Safeway on Harris. Now I'll be turning it back over to Alexandra, thank you.
Thank you, Rory. And after discussing this year with my fellow members, we would like to share the following takeaways we have received from our time in Youth Council. Through our projects and curriculum, we feel we have improved our skills in leadership, public speaking, critical thinking, confidence, community engagement and beyond. We have also increased our knowledge of the needs of local youth, city government, city programs, local activities and public outreach. And also, I would like to say, I have made some great friends on this Youth Council. I have loved getting to know all sorts of high schoolers from different parts that I may have never met before. So that was also a great experience. And next week, to wrap up the year, we are visiting the Sequoia Park Zoo to learn about how the zoo functions and to tour the Redwood Skywalk, maybe pet a goat, Sierra, thoughts?
If you want.
Great, okay.
Sky's the limit.
And to finish our presentation, we would like to say thank you so much to Sierra, Jim and Robin for all they've taught us throughout the year, for their fearless leadership. And also to Joseph Carter for helping us film our PSAs. And yes, this is Eureka Youth Council saying thank you for a great year, thank you all so much for supporting us through our endeavors. Goodbye for now, good luck to all of my members and their future endeavors and good luck to any future Youth Council members. Thank you all so much for your time and we would like to answer any questions you have for us.
Councilmember Bauer.
I gotta say, great job to all of you. And I don't really have a question as much as I got a job for you. And that's to continue what you're doing, is to go back and tell your fellow students, you know, that government, maybe it's not exciting all the time, it's critical to, you know, dealing with things like hunger and homelessness. And people don't understand that and I hope you, I hope you continue to be involved, you know, for the rest of your lives and maybe replace us someday, City Council people, so thank you and keep up the good work.
Thank you. I have a question, you are juniors, right, or are you seniors now, was it? Well, actually. Alexandra? Rafael has graduated from Zobarnum and then we have a few seniors and a few juniors and Rory, you're a sophomore. Oh, and Asher is a sophomore as well. So a little scattered. So I know that we wanted to not make them all seniors so that you will be around for a while able to participate in different ways and encourage your fellow students to get involved and not just do the program and then disappear. So I'm really excited that you are going to be able to continue now to make a difference in your own community and then continue, like Councilmember Bauer said, to perhaps be sitting here one day. Councilmember Arroyo.
I know this is kind of putting you all on the spot, but do you have any constructive ideas for ways we could improve the program in the future? And if you think of something after the fact and want to email us, that's also an option, but open to any thoughts you might have.
Go ahead Alexandra.
Nothing immediately comes to mind, I mean, I think that Sierra and Robin and Jim have all been incredible leaders. They have taught us so much, they're positive and encouraging. I know that next year Jim is going to be taking over as the front man, which we're very excited about. And he's going to do a great job. And yeah, I think this is overall was a very good experience. I have nothing, nothing pressing to complain about. But yeah, it was just lovely to learn how to get involved with my community, I've lived here my entire life, so it was really nice to get involved, to see some tangible results from our work, you know, we have the PSAs to show you, we have the survey results, we have, we can see the end result is what I was trying to say, yes. And of course, as I said earlier, it was a great experience too, meeting new people and getting involved with people from other schools, from other grade levels. So yeah, overall it was a great experience and I am glad to have been a part of it.
I think Kate, oh, I'm sorry.
I'm not a full-time Eureka resident, lived in the area for about three years. And I really love this program, but I think one thing we could do is a bit more public outreach because I know one of the things, like I know a lot of people didn't know about the program because it's like there's a piece of paper stuck to a wall at school that we pass by every day, but we don't really get the chance to stop by and look. So maybe if there is a chance, like announcing it to schools or like having, being able to go to schools and explain, hey, this is what this is. And maybe even show them this slide, like, hey, this is what we get to do. To more so, instead of just using our words and saying, hey, this is a cool program, you should join it, actually give them, like Alexandra was saying, tangible evidence of what we've been doing and the impact that it's had.
That is great feedback. Good job Rory. And the nice thing about, you know, constructive criticism is that it's not always, it feels like complaining because sometimes it's hard to say, but it's so important. And the more comfortable you get with it, the more useful it will become. So it's, it's hard to think of constructive things, I know, especially when you're feeling really good. So like Councilmember Arroyo said, if you think of it later, you could just send us a note and say, you know what would have been nice is if we had, I don't know, a choice of refreshments, I don't know. Exactly, we both went to food, so. I will tell you that they are used to constructive criticism, I don't know if they were before, but they are great listeners and they have learned to listen to everything that we say and not get upset or like take it to heart to just know that it's to better themselves. And I think that's one of the many qualities, because they have so many, that they all do have, that none of them get their feelings hurt or get upset, all of them like take what we say with a grain of salt and all of them have improved in any area that we've suggested to them. So I second that with the constructive criticism, but they are used to it and they can take it and they're tough. I think that's going to be a great tool for you guys. And we have something for you for completing your time here, so we're all going to bring it down, oh, yes, please.
I just wanted to say thank you for your dedication to this and it's so refreshing to know that the future really is bright. Sometimes it feels not so much, but just watching you guys go through this whole process and watching what you've accomplished and just seeing the confidence that you all are showing here today is just, it's a real gift. So thanks so much for your dedication to being a part of our healthy future.
And thanks to the staff for doing a great job and you are all officially part of Team Eureka now, which is a pretty cool team to be on. All right, so yeah, Council has a gift for you guys to thank you and for your time and dedication to the program. You can sit down your papers, put them in a stack, photo time. Ooh, special treatment, take it.
You could just put the plaques in front of your names.
You could just put the plaques in front of your names.
You guys are all in. And do we do one with staff in there? Great, thank you. All right, can we give them a round of applause? All right, so now we are moving on to the public comment period. This is the time for members of the public who wish to be heard on matters that do not appear on the agenda. We have a policy of for each speaker to speak for three minutes each. Is there anybody here who would like to make public comment at this time?
I missed last time, so I guess I'll go first this time. Yeah, I'm sorry for not being here last time. I just brought my wife home from the hospital for the twenty-second time since she had taken your vaunted back shot. And she's still deteriorating right now. I almost had to take her back yesterday again. And I'm still wondering why you all haven't lifted that mandate yet? With all of the evidence coming out, with all the damages being done by that shot and the lack of good that it ever did, how can you morally justify keeping that? And why are you laughing? Okay, but yeah, because we get a lot of you guys laughing at people, which leads us to the next subject, which was the hubris and the utter chutzpah of the two of you showing up the school board or the Board of Education meeting to lecture them on the proper way to receive people who were speaking in front of them. I thought that was incredibly ballsy of you to lecture them on that after the way you laugh, openly laugh and denigrate people who appear in front of you. And then to encourage the kids to hoot and catcall after you've called the meeting before and you've threatened to call the meeting when people speak out of turn here, that was just incredibly hypocritical of the two of you. And I really, I really felt ashamed that you were representing us there, you know? Maybe you should think about the way you treat people before you tell other people how to treat people. Beyond that, I live right next to Twenty Thirty Park. I guess that's coming up later, but I gotta leave. And even though I, the, I guess the renaming of Twenty Thirty Park's coming up. And I just wanted to say that even though I consider that to be a bunch of useless virtue signaling, I really admire the way that Uroq and the Wiat tribes have been handling things lately. And it seems like they handle things so well, if maybe all of you should retire and turn things over to them because they seem to get much more bang for their buck and they're doing a lot more good for this community while doing a lot less harm. And I think maybe you guys should take a lesson from them.
Do we have anybody else for public comment?
Good evening, council and mayor. My name's Joanne McGary. I'm a Arcata resident, but I appreciate coming to the Eureka City Council meetings because they're different in how they operate and we can all learn, like those young people learn, from how different communities do things. But the one thing that Eureka and Arcata are doing together along with the county and other municipalities is the Climate Action Plan. And twenty twenty-three is not too far away. And I am encouraging my Arcata City Council to be, be known as the Climate Action Council for the city of Arcata. And I would like to challenge you as Eureka City Council members and mayor to also make climate action very prominent daily and at all these meetings and such. And I would really hope that before we even get a formal climate action plan, that we all work together to do really important, significant things like reducing greenhouse gas emissions. I drove here tonight again because there's no buses to take me back to Arcata. So that's one of the really big issues that for twenty twenty-three, I would like for our municipalities in our region to focus on. So make, become a Climate Action Council, please, in twenty twenty-three. And I think I'm going to get the Arcata City Council to join you there. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other commenters in for public comment in-house? Okay, I do see we have some on the, on Zoom. Susan Drag.
Can, can, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Yes, we can.
Hold on, my camera, I'm sorry, my camera. Hold on, hold on, hold on. Hold on, hold on, hold on. Hold there, that's this, what's this? Here we go. This is about the Redwood Drag Show, the Redwood Pie Drag Show?
Okay, now we can't hear you. We see your lips moving, but, but we can't hear you. Can you hear me? We can see you, but we cannot hear you. So how do we handle this? Do we want? Can? Why don't we go to the next speaker? Okay, and see if we can get it. I don't think, can you hear us? We're gonna turn you off and have you come back?
Can you message your fam?
And we're gonna go to. Donnie Creekmore. Thank you. Donnie Creekmore, are you ready to speak?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
I'm sorry, something was going off. I have a microphone there. Uh, you guys can hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, I just wanted to ask some questions. My first question is for Susan, actually. You made some things, you said you were going to make some things worse on November first if you were to actually make your comments before the public comments. You said it was interesting hearing me say that I'm free to hate, omitting the fact that I said free to hate pedophiles. Not sure how you missed that one. Kim Burgel said November first that she one hundred percent supports drag shows for kids as young as two years old. Kim, do you support Balenciaga and their recent commercial ads depicting a toddler with a teddy bear in BDSM clothing surrounded by other BDSM gear as well as some empty wine glasses? I'd also be curious, what do you say to critics who call those ads and all-age drag shows grooming and borderline pedophilia? Do you perhaps own any Balenciaga products in your wardrobe, perhaps from the same ads in question? Scott, I got a question for you. Scott Bauer, Ward Four. He acts like, he, he acts like my self-identification as a patriot on November first was somehow me claiming he and all others present were not patriots, even though these words never left my mouth. He says, I claim he and everyone else are not patriotic because, quote, "we don't share the same disdain for those who are different." Again, completely missing where I say all-age drag shows where kids wandering in and out of unmanaged doorways while adults dance in sexualized costumes for cash tips was a bad idea. And maybe Heidi Benzini regrets holding an all-age drag show at the Jefferson Center. You know, I said I hate pedophiles. Pedophiles are sex offenders. Are, are, do you guys have an indifferent position towards them? Like, is your disposition towards pedophiles like indifferent? Do you support pedophilia? I'm just curious. I did a search on the DOJ's National Sex Offender Public Website, and I, and wouldn't you know it, there's a hundred and two registered sex offenders within three-mile radius of the Jefferson Center, where they had this all-age drag show open and free to the public with kids wandering in and out the door unmanaged. But no, it's, you know, the concerned parents who are the bad guys who were portrayed by yourselves as well as the local media, Humboldt County Human Rights Commission, all basically portraying them as hate group. And that's the big problem, you know, so it's like, yeah, don't call us a hate group.
Thank you very much. That's your time. Philip Bowdre.
Hello, we wanted to call in and let folks know what we think about the library and all those wonderful services. What do you think about the library?
I like it.
What did you like about it?
I get to get four books.
Yeah, and do you like Lego time?
Yes.
Are the people nice?
Yes.
Cool. What do you think?
I think it's bad.
What? Yeah, that's your version of good, isn't it? All right, and are we cool with drag shows? Yep, all right, thank you. You're still cool, we'll warp you up. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Caroline Griffith.
Hi, good evening. I just wanted to express my thanks again to the council for continuing on with hybrid meetings. It is really great to be able to still participate in meetings, even if I can't make it there in person. And especially when we have all of these nasty viruses going around. So hopefully this continues into the future in perpetuity. I also, and it's just a delight to be able to tune in from home while I'm cooking dinner and see all the amazing things that are happening in Eureka. And I also want to thank Mayor Seaman for her service on the council and for doing a really amazing job out of what is essentially a like full-time volunteer position. I think you've really set the bar pretty high for civic engagement and engaging members of the public outside of city council meetings and to create a space within council meetings that is very welcoming and feels very unpretentious and accessible. So best of luck in all the other things that you're doing and thanks for your service.
Thank you very much. And can we go back and see if the first one is working yet? Susan Drag. Are you trying to speak? I'm so sorry, your, your microphone is not working at all. If you have something to send us, you could email us or you can try next meeting. I'm terribly sorry. We'd like to know what you have to say, but unfortunately, it's not working. Is there any other public comment? All right, so I will now close public comment then, and we will bring it back to the next item on our agenda, which is the consent calendar. I believe we have an item that we are going to pull from the consent calendar. That is item number F three, police patrol vehicle purchase. Can I get an approval minus that?
So moved. I'll second minus item F three.
All right, everybody vote. Oh, oh, who first did it? Was it Kim and then Natalie? I'm sorry, Councilmember Burgel and Councilmember Arroyo. I'm getting, I'm getting super lazy. I know, going out. Unanimous vote, Councilmember Moulton absent. Motion carries. All right, and so now we are going to look at item F three, the police patrol vehicle purchase. And I don't know if it's, Chief, do you want to speak on that item or do we want to have Brian Gerving?
Good evening, Mayor and Council, sure.
I'm throwing out titles today. They don't exist anymore.
Last meeting, fair game, right. Good evening, Mayor and Council, and Chief Jarvis and I will likely both be speaking on this. Certainly, there are some aspects of the agenda item that he can address better than I can. But just to give you a little bit of background, what's before you tonight is the purchase of eight vehicles to replace patrol and other response vehicles at, at Eureka Police Department. They're intended to augment the existing fleet and replace in-service vehicles that are up to thirteen years old that have well over a hundred thousand miles on them. As with any fleet purchase, the process that staff goes through is to analyze the need. What, what characteristics do we need these vehicles to have? We select suitable vehicles, ascertain whether they're available or not, and then figure out the cost, obtain quotes, you know, search out options through cooperative purchasing and that sort of thing. In this case, staff is recommending the purchase of eight fully outfitted Chevy Tahos through a partnership of CAP Fleet, which is a nationwide company based in Texas, and Northwood Chevy. Fully outfitted means that basically when they arrive to us here in Eureka, they will be fully equipped with everything except a radio and the computer unit that the IT department installs, but lights, all the infrastructure for the radios, the cables, the antennas, all of the, the boxes and trays necessary to hold all of that equipment, plus the gear that the police need to carry and their weapons, all of that will already be installed. Basically, we put stickers on, install a radio, and we're good to go. The reason why we're, we're recommending CAP Fleet is that, number one, those vehicles, the Chevy Tahos, meet the needs. They've got sufficient space and performance to do what the police department needs to do. They're available, which is a huge issue this year in particular. If we were to try to place an order for Chevy Tahos or for Ford Utility Interceptors that would be delivered to Eureka and then outfitted or sent out for outfitting, we wouldn't be able to do that. Earlier this year, the order window for both of those vehicles opened. The order window is the period during which a fleet customer can order a vehicle from a manufacturer. And in the case of the Chevy Tahoe, it was open for one day. And they basically, all of the vehicles that they had available were then reserved and they had to close the order window. In the case of the Ford Utility Interceptor, which is what the bulk of the police fleet is currently comprised of, the order window was slightly longer, but still less than a week. So as with a lot of other vehicles, our options are just kind of few and far between at this point. And like I said, arriving fully outfitted makes sense because if you look in the details of the quotes that we've obtained through CAP Fleet, the cost of outfitting, including labor, is about what we pay for parts alone. And then we either have to have our staff outfit those vehicles, which is a, a real constraint for us right now, given our staffing levels and the needs of our fleet. Or we have to send them out for outfitting, which is an additional expense. So having those vehicles arrive fully outfitted for about the same price that we pay in parts is a huge benefit. We've, we've been asked to look at other options. What else is out there? Why not electric vehicles? Understanding the city's commitment to modernizing its fleet, to reducing greenhouse gas emissions, there are a few points there. Availability is one of them, just like any other vehicles, they're difficult to come by. Suitability, they just don't have the space and the performance necessary for these response vehicles. And staff has had a practice for the past, as long as we have records of, of obtaining pursuit-rated vehicles or special service-rated vehicles for our emergency response, whether it's police or fire. And we do that because they have things like upgraded brakes, tires, wheels, suspension systems, and charging systems that allow those vehicles to hold up under some pretty harsh use conditions. And at present, there aren't any electric vehicles that have that SSV or pursuit rating. There are a couple of exceptions, neither of which are available right now. One is the Chevy Bolt. There's an example of a Chevy Bolt outside. We have a couple in our fleet here at City Hall. They're great little cars, but they just don't have the space for police patrol. The other one is a Ford Lightning SSV, which Ford has announced. That's an F-150 crew cab that's fully electric and does have some of those upgraded features, but they're also not available yet. So staff's committed to, you know, implementing the. So staff's committed to uh, you know, implementing the, the city's commitment to these sustainability efforts. And we're going to look at EVs uh, in the future as more of them become available with more of the traits that we look for in vehicles like these. And uh, you know, we'll also have to look at the infrastructure necessary to support those. What is the charging infrastructure necessary at our facilities? We've begun with charging stations at City Hall, coming up at the municipal auditorium, expanding our deployment of public charging stations. There's one that's going to be built soon here on H Street uh, in Old Town. So all of those things are what we'll need to continue to do as we expand EVs for our fleet. And at EPD, if you're looking at charging multiple vehicles in a lot that's already really impacted uh, with a lot of vehicles taking up space, uh, we're probably going to get to the point where we need to upgrade a service. Uh, you know, have a bigger feed coming in and we'll look at that in the future uh, as it makes sense. But for right now, staff's recommendation is to appropriate uh, additional funding to the line item that's in your staff report and to authorize the sole source procurement of these eight vehicles through CAP Fleet and Northwood Auto. And I and Chief Jarvis are both available for questions.
All right, do we have any questions? Councilmember Castellano.
Um, and thank you for, you know, providing a little more detail into this uh, decision. And you know, I, I definitely understand the sense of uh, time sensitivity, you know, with making this purchase. Um, you know, and, and I did a little research on, you know, police vehicles, electric vehicles, hybrid vehicles. And it seems like um, you know, to really implement something like that, we would need to kind of think ahead uh, of probably a few years in terms of, you know, the charging infrastructure, um, even getting on wait lists for vehicles. And so I, I'm kind of curious for you to speak a little bit to our kind of vehicle procurement policy and just in terms of, are those the kinds of things that we're starting to make plans for? Or are those the kinds of things that council should or could be giving more direction on in terms of that kind of forward thinking?
Those are things that staff is already looking at, but they are a few years out. Um, we just don't see the availability of suitable EVs for large portions of our fleet just yet. But uh, like I said, we have uh, brought the first ones onboard with the Chevy Bolts for City Hall. We have an electric Ford Transit for the uplift program that's housed over at the municipal auditorium. So as those vehicles become available, we are procuring them and we're installing the infrastructure necessary to support it. With emergency vehicles, it becomes a little bit more complicated because uh, the time that it takes to charge is more difficult to accommodate with a fleet that is really moving a whole lot more than what we use here at City Hall. If a vehicle is parked for several hours during the day as a pool of car, that works just fine. Uh, the same isn't true of a vehicle that's necessary for emergency response. But we are looking at those options. We're also looking at those options for the heavy equipment in our fleet. There are state regulations that are coming down the pike that will require us to have a hundred percent of our medium and heavy duty vehicles be EV as we purchase them uh, in, starting in about five or six years. And that's a huge concern for us because there just aren't vehicles available in that class right now. I think that the state's uh, desire in enacting those regulations is to prompt the industry to kind of get on board and start moving more quickly. But staff is, is actively working on all of those.
And then have, have you looked at all into the, you know, I know there's electric chargers now that, you know, could charge a vehicle in 30 minutes. They're kind of high-speed chargers. I imagine it might take a kind of a bigger tie-in to the grid. This is me like not knowing much about it. Have you looked into those?
Yeah, the, the charging station that we have here at City Hall is a level two charger. It, it will charge a vehicle over the course of several hours. Um, the, the larger chargers like you're talking about, like are down by Bay Shore Mall or some of the others that are, the Tesla Supercharger is another variety, but that, there's proprietary. They'll, they're the ones when you um, see EVs advertised that'll charge from 20% to 80% in, you know, 20 minutes. That's the kind of charger that would um, work for that. But that kind of charger would require the same size service as this entire building. So just slapping it into an existing facility doesn't work there, there. It requires a lot more effort, a lot more upfront cost and, and planning.
Thanks, and then one last question, you know, I, I definitely, I researched a little bit on hybrid options, like the 4K hybrid SUV for police interceptor. Um, did you consider that at all?
So the, the Ford Utility Interceptor actually comes, they say standard as a hybrid and then uh, going with a gasoline engine is a deductive option, so it's cheaper, but it's an option that you have to select. Uh, that would be one that we would consider, but the Ford Utility Interceptor is just not available. Uh, and I, I didn't really cover why we are able to get these Chevy Tahos through CAP Fleet. They act as what's called a bailment service, which is not a term that I had heard before we, you know, went through this process, but a bailment service and they have a contract with GM where they're allotted a number, several hundred of vehicles per year that they then have to outfit to a certain extent and then they deliver to a customer through a dealer. So because they already have that allocation, we were able to get eight of their vehicles uh, for our purposes. But we wouldn't be able to order a hybrid utility interceptor or a Chevy Tahoe from a local dealer or a regional dealer uh, if it weren't for this bailment service through CAP Fleet.
I have a couple of questions. They're probably for Chief Jarvis. They're regarding the safety issues that were brought up. Um, and particularly when we're talking about needing these particular cars because they last longer under really um, strenuous circumstances. What is, what is an average? How often do you do high-speed pursuits and are you talking about also just the short-term kind of bursts of, of speed? What is it that's, that's taking such a high use of these cars? And um, and mostly for the safety issue is like, do we have to have as many high-speed pursuits? Because it doesn't prove to be very uh, safe, even with very experienced drivers at the wheel, so.
My opinion on pursuits has changed drastically as I've changed positions in law enforcement. So what, what was uh, fun as a street cop, now I cringe as an administrator to, to hear them. So the purpose of these vehicles, there's good questions, Mayor, the purpose of these vehicles is not so we can go out and be in pursuits all day. Uh, when Director Gerving brings up the term pursuit, pursuit rated, as he explained, it's a different level of construction in a vehicle that makes it a little more hardy, if you will, and, and a little more um, durable. And it makes it safer. It makes it safer for the officers that are operating it and for the citizens that are around it because it does have um, better brakes, better suspension. It allows us to run all of the equipment we have because it has its um, upgraded electrical systems and things like that. So that's what they mean by pursuit rated. Uh, the tires are specially designed, uh, run flat tires in case you, you get a flat at speed. So we're not looking at these so that we can chase people all over town. Um, as you can imagine, over a long career, I've had opportunity to work in a lot of different types of police vehicles over the years. Some of them are antiques now and uh, the, the Chevy Tahoe in, in my mind has been the best police vehicle that I've had the, the pleasure of working in for a lot of reasons. It, it um, really reduces the amount of back injuries that, that I saw in my last employer. People aren't going into trunks pulling out lots of gear all day. It's at a different level. It raises your, your point of view because you sit a little bit higher, so you see a lot more things. I think a lot of collisions are avoided because the, the operator can see further ahead than when they're sitting low in a smaller car. They're easier to get in and out of. There's less um, strain on the officers. Knee injuries went down, back injuries went down. And um, I, I think that there are pros and cons to everything. I'm very, very appreciative of city manager, of staff, for all the work they've put into this. And quite frankly, right now, we're um, we're struggling a bit because we're, we're sending officers out in the field every day in cars that were put in, into the field in 2008, uh, 2009, 2010. And they're worn out and uh, they're breaking down all the time. So we're, we're at a critical point where we need to get the equipment to, to be able to serve the public. Um, this meets our needs, especially for the, the roles that these vehicles will, will use. Mobile command vehicles for the command staff where we can run a critical incident from them. We'll have um, all kinds of equipment in them that will facilitate that. We'll use them for supervisors' vehicles. They carry a ton of equipment so that we don't have the ability to issue to every single car, but the sergeant has it. Sergeant gets there on scene. They have a lot of equipment. And the canine's obviously room for the animal that's humane or humane amount of space. They have a lot of extra equipment that they need to carry. So it just made sense for us and we were very fortunate, I believe, to find this, this um, dealer that had some in stock because other, otherwise we're, we're out of luck for years.
Excellent. Can I just ask another question about safety and only because uh, this is a good opportunity to do it? Do you guys do any driver training for police officers and do they renew it?
Absolutely. We do it in the academy and then it is part of our perishable skills training that we have to update. I think it's every other cycle. The cycle is 18 months, two years. So we do.
Thank you.
And the supervisors pay attention as well and, and we are holding people accountable to their driving.
Um, thanks so much. Those are my questions. Anybody else have questions? All right, um, I think we'll take public comment on this one. So do we have any public comment in-house about this item? And I see we do have public comment on Zoom. Caroline Griffith.
Hi, uh, I am speaking this evening on behalf of the North Coast Environmental Center, the Coalition for Responsible Transportation Priorities, EPIC, and the Redwood Coalition for Climate and Environmental Responsibility. And I first of all, want to thank you for the efforts that you're making to transition to EVs and low emission vehicles. But also, we would love to see the city reconsider the purchase of these Chevy Tahos. Um, as we stated in the comments that we emailed to the council, one of the concerns is the size of the Chevy Tahoe, which is the fourth largest SUV on the market. They're so big that nine children can stand in a row in front of one of them and not be seen by the driver. Uh, they're most dangerous to people who are walking, biking and rolling. Studies have shown that SUVs are 23% more likely to hit people than cars when making left-hand turns and 61% more likely than cars to hit pedestrians along roadways. And this is primarily due to visibility issues, uh, not necessarily driver error. And also because of the size of the vehicles, pedestrians are also more likely to suffer serious injury or death when hit by SUVs. And so given the traffic safety issues that we have in the city, we would love to see EPD set an example by prioritizing smaller vehicles. Um, also there's the issue of climate. Um, according to a report by the International Energy Agency, SUVs are the second largest contributor to greenhouse gas emissions in the last decade, second only to the energy industry. And the draft Regional Climate Action Plan, which hopefully you will all become champions before, as the previous speaker said, um, calls for a rapid transition of both municipal and private fleets to zero emission vehicles. And the city's own environmentally preferable procurement policy calls for purchasing and leasing only the most fuel-efficient vehicles and preferably low or zero emission fuels. So at this point, the city should clearly only be purchasing zero emission vehicles. And if zero emission vehicles don't exist yet to fit certain needs, you can fall back on the only the most fuel-efficient vehicles part of this policy. It's only recently that SUV started being used as patrol vehicles. So we question that these are the only vehicles that can do the job and believe that there are actually other options. Uh, according to the staff report for this item, the purchase of the additional vehicles is being justified because of a change in policy, which will assign vehicles to individual offers, officers. And our request is that you, if you can't find smaller, safer, zero emission vehicles that meet EPD's needs currently, uh, that you either consider the policy, reconsider the policy that necessitates the purchase or delay the purchase until better options are available. Um, as Director Gerving stated earlier, there are currently options. Um, there just aren't very many of them right now, but there are sure to be more in the near future because of electric vehicle mandates. And it could just be a matter of planning ahead and making this a priority. And this is really an opportunity for EPD to decarbonize its fleet and set this standard regionally and let others, um, police departments know that this is an option and possible. So thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other public comment on this item?
Susan Drag.
I think her, her hand's been up the whole time. I don't think it ever went down. Oh, did she? Okay. Susan, we're on the.
What in the hell has a drag queen ever done to make you have so much respect for them and admire them so much?
Susan, you need to be on topic right now.
And jump on the floor and.
Excuse me, we're, we're talking about a specific issue right now? Okay, so um, we're going to turn this off and I will bring it back to council. All right, um, so we are bringing it back for uh, comments or uh, motion? Councilmember Bauer.
Yeah, uh, you know, it, it's such an interesting situation. I mean, as everybody, I, I have a friend that's been on a waitlist by a Lightning, you know, fully electric truck for over a year and a half and it's not even possible. Um, so we're stuck in this world post-COVID where we don't have the things we need to transition to clean, you know, clean, clean fuels, clean economy. Yet we have needs like safety and officers needing vehicles that are um, you know, performance rated. Like, you know, crazy driving when, when it's necessary. And um, no, I mean crazy, I just mean, you know, having to really get to places in a, in a hurry when it's necessary. Um, so I, I'm torn with, we, I think the city has done a lot with transitioning our, our fleet, our municipal fleet to electric and that's something to, to be proud of. And in this situation, when it comes to first responders, you know, um, we're kind of stuck right now. You know, and the transition's going to take some time. And I know we'll get there, but at, at the, at this current moment in time with our needs for um, for safe, a safe police force and, and um, safety for our citizens, I just, um, I think we have to, to, you know, buy these vehicles and um, you know, and proceed with, you know, utmost haste in the future to procure vehicles that are fully electric, you know, Lightnings. I only know of one municipality that has um, electric uh, pursuit vehicles and that's Fremont. They have two Tesla Model S85s and those are of what, a hundred grand, 120, fully outfitted, probably more than that. So when it comes to budgets, we got that to deal with. Um, I would love for our police force to be in Teslas, you know? I think that'd be really cool. Um, and if we're ever wealthy, I would suggest we, we do that. But um, in the current moment, I can't see how, we can't do this with the focus being in the future. We'll, we'll do the best we can to, to have a zero emission fleet and one that champions. I consider myself a champion of the Climate Action Plan, but when it comes to first responders, the need for, for, for ci- you know, public safety, I just um, feel like we're kind of stuck. So um, that's where I'm leaning.
That emotion? Oh, that's how you're leaning?
Well, I'll make the motion to approve of um, item F3.
A second.
Okay, do we have any discussion now? Councilmember, oh, okay, go ahead. No, you're good. No, okay. Councilmember Castellano and I'll come back to Councilmember Arroyo.
Okay, um, thank you for your um, thoughts, Councilmember Bauer. I, you know, I do think in terms of where we are right now as a city, this is, you know, this makes sense as a choice. Um, you know, I do have concerns about kind of a, a need for greater planning when it comes to implementing our climate goals and really implementing our climate action plan. You know, it's, it's one thing to make a policy and it's a one, it's another thing to, to really plan ahead for, okay, what kind of infrastructure will it take to implement that policy? What are the costs going to be? Um, so I, I would like to, you know, just in, with that in mind, as we, you know, in the spring come forward with our uh, capital improvement plan, at least see, you know, some considerations for how that might, um, you know, what we, what we really need to, you know, to think forward a few years. And not even saying like we would adopt it for next year, but just to see what's on our radar in terms of what are the costs we're looking at. Um, you know, and, and I also, you know, I know that this, um, you know, officer retention is really important to our community right now and I know that this is definitely something. Um, you know, officer retention is really important to our community right now, and I know that this is definitely something that. Is, you know, a value in terms of officer retention, um. It's, you know, I'll just say, like, I drive a really small electric car and I mean, I'm not, you know, a police officer. Um, in case you're wondering. Um, you know, and and I think we also just as a community need to do some work around. Like shifting our priorities, um. You know, whether that comes to housing, transportation and, you know, so I hope, you know, just the community council that really becomes something that we. Think about in terms of moving forward.
Councilmember Royal.
Yeah, I do support this and I understand that it will disappoint some folks to say that, but, um, I also really want to ensure that we're. Um, making a significant effort to acknowledge that these are larger vehicles than some people may be used to driving and, you know, uh, I'm not sure. If people are transitioning from a smaller vehicle or a different kind of sight, uh, sightline to to these, but I trust that, um, that training will be. Available to folks and, um, as far as planning ahead for, uh, the greening of our fleet, I think that's incredibly important. Um, and I know with, um, you know, Humboldt Transit Authority, for example. You know, we we had high hopes for having all electric, um, you know, chargeable. Uh, buses and that just did not work in this community for the range we needed, um, them to have. And so now we're going the hydrogen route. So that's another thing to consider exploring as we install the infrastructure to have hydrogen fueling.
Whoa, that's what I did the other day.
That's what you did? Now I know. Susan was telling me about that and I was like, I don't think that's true. Little comedic relief. So. We will have hydrogen fueling infrastructure and, um, it's not just for Humboldt Transit Authority vehicles. It's also for other, um. Municipal uses and for commercial use. And so that's coming in the near future with a grant that. Humboldt Transit Authority applied for and that hydrogen fueling will be located in Eureka. So. Um, pretty cool opportunity to explore that technology as it becomes more available. But at this time, I understand that. EPD has been waiting a long time for some upgrades to vehicles and that these have, um, some capacity that other vehicles just don't when it comes to the canines and, um. And some of those other things that were already mentioned. So. Um, I hope that our next round of vehicle purchases is, uh. Is u- utilizing some technology that we currently are not able to get our hands on, but I I look forward to that in the near future.
Thank you. Any other discussion on this? Then we're all ready to vote.
Unanimous vote, Councilmember Molten, Councilmember Molten absent, motion carries.
Thank you very much. Um, so we are going to move on to, we have legislative action correspondence. Is there anything that we need to quickly get written before the next council meeting? All right. Oh, Councilmember. Royal, for some reason I had got Molten in my head because she just said it and then I couldn't get it out.
I have questions about, um, PG&E capacity constraints in other parts of our county. So we're not facing that here. But I think, um, it would be good as the county seat and. Um, the largest big old city in Humboldt County to, um, to make a point of reaching out to. Um, express concern, um, and in, you know, really encourage PG&E. Um, to address the capacity limitations, especially when it comes to housing. I think if there's, uh, not the ability to develop. More housing in Southern Humboldt, which is a great need, um, we will be feeling the impacts of that lack of housing here. Um, and so I would like to ask that we write a letter to PG&E's, um. Head honcho here in California and say, this is, um, very problematic and has these ripple effects throughout our community. And CC, um, our assembly member, our senator, et cetera.
I fully support that.
I have a template. It was written by another agency locally. Uh, we're not the only ones considering this.
As, uh, the county goes, so, hey, Eureka, we're our own little ecosystem here and we've got to support our neighbors.
Thank you. Yeah, I know. We really, they're suffering and, um. And they need housing too. So, thanks.
Yeah. All right, item H one, twenty thirty renaming. And we are going to invite, uh, program manager, Prasker, Prasker here.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Robin Prasker with the Eureka Community Services Department. And tonight I will be presenting a consideration for twenty thirty Park to be renamed. Dot Yas, Where the Cypress Are Park. But first I would like to provide a background on the park improvement project as a whole. Twenty thirty Park is a neighborhood park bounded by Union, Summer, Pine and California Streets. It was established from nineteen fifty-two to nineteen fifty-three, made possible by assistance with the twenty thirty Club. A service club made up of twenty to thirty-nine-year-old men, no longer active in the region. The existing facilities include a playground, basketball court, open field area, storage building, and the Jacob Haney Little League Field. In twenty nineteen, the city was awarded six point three million dollars in a very competitive grant by California State Parks. Community input, diversity, accessibility and inclusivity have been integral parts throughout the park improvement project. And the project scope includes an Egress and Watershed themed all-inclusive playground. Multi-use sports courts for basketball, roller hockey and footsall. New parking and restrooms, fitness equipment, accessible pathways. A grass play area for volleyball and soccer. New gathering plazas on California Street and Summer Street. Jacob Haney Ball Field improvements and lighting and irrigation. This park improvement project has been quite a journey. Spanning nearly five years from the initial grant writing process to when the project is expected to be complete. We know the community has been eagerly waiting for these improvements and we just wanted to demonstrate the timing that goes into a project of this magnitude. We started public input for this project in twenty nineteen when developing the initial grant application. Through multiple community meetings, table and opportunities, a survey and school input with assistance from Greenway Partners. Then in twenty twenty-one, we refined this community vision through an on-site park meeting and Zoom meeting with our current design firm, MDG. Of utmost importance when conducting this type of outreach is ensuring that meetings are accessible without a car. Accommodating different work and life schedules and engaging directly with the neighborhood. We also always utilize crime prevention through environmental design concepts and consult with public safety for their expertise. Shown here is an evolution of the park design from initial concept to final concept, which is where we are today. The center and star of this park will be the Egress and Watershed themed main play area. Fully accessible by ramp, there are two slides off the main structure, including additional experiences such as play panels, climbing features and more. There will also be other play features, of course, like swings, spinners, dedicated toddler play area and additional play elements throughout this main area of the park. From the beginning of this project and throughout the design process, recognizing and honoring the twenty thirty Club and their contributions has been a high priority. This effort will be reflected by dedicating a twenty thirty Plaza within the park. That includes a plaque and interpretive signage celebrating our local Eureka history. Should the name change move forward, this will be a wonderful way to pay homage to the club and park's history. And if the name change does not move forward, staff will continue to ensure this park's history is celebrated. The Wiat tribe has been a stakeholder during the park design process to help incorporate interpretive, cultural and educational elements into the park design. This includes plants that are culturally significant, a salmon run themed gathering plaza and drop-off spot. And signage containing solatluck in addition to English. Now that we have reviewed the park history and park project update, let's get into the renaming recommendation that we're here for tonight. The overall park renovation process and major changes of this scale provided an opportunity to consult with the community about this park's identity. This was accomplished by an initial survey providing history of the park and name and simply asking if a name change is supported and why or why not. Of the two hundred and forty-nine responses received, over seventy-five percent supported renaming the park. Survey respondents were also provided an opportunity to suggest new possible names. And many of the respondents expressed a desire to have a park with a Wiat name. The top three names from the surf first survey were identified and in consultation with the Wiat tribe, the best possible translations were provided. These three names went out in a second survey along with audio files so that people could hear the proper pronunciation. The final renaming decision was placed in the hands of Eureka residents. An article published in local newspapers identified these three name options and provided a link so readers could easily vote for their favorite. The second survey had over eight hundred and thirty community members taking part. And Dot Yas, Where the Cypress Are Park, received the most support at three hundred and twenty-six votes or thirty-nine point zero nine percent of responses. After the second survey. City staff followed the city protocol for renaming requests and brought the name recommendation to the Open Space Parks and Recreation Commission. And the Planning Commission, who both unanimously supported the new name. Now, the name is being brought to you tonight to consider. Staff have provided a recommended motion for your consideration, but now I'd like to turn it back to you for discussion and staff are available for questions.
Do we have any questions? All right, uh, very thorough report. Do we have any public comment on this item? Anybody online with public comment on this item? Seeing none, I will bring it back to council for discussion and motion. Councilmember Brikel.
Well, I was looking for the motion, but, um, I just want to say what a great opportunity to continue the relationships with the tribe and to make that amends and to make that change. I'm really excited to continue to do that work and this is going to be such a wonderful opportunity. Uh, for our kids to be able to have the language and to be able to integrate in such a great way. So I really appreciate your dedication and hard work on this. I know you worked really hard. Um, and everybody that voted on it. And now I still can't find the motion.
Oh, it's up on the screen.
Oh, and I move that we adopt a resolution naming twenty thirty Park as Dot Yas Park. Where the Cypress Are Park.
A second.
All right. Everybody ready to vote?
Unanimous vote, Councilmember Molten absent, motion carries.
I just want everybody to know I didn't forget the discussion part. Everybody was reaching for their buttons, so I assumed that meant they didn't need to discuss it. They were ready. All right, um, let's get to the private sewer lateral ordinance revisions. And I believe, um, Deputy Public Works Director Isa is on Zoom. Hey there, Brian.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, tonight we bring back to you the sewer lateral ordinance revisions. These are the essentially the same text that came to you at the previous meeting, um, with the one minor administrative change that we talked about regarding the twenty-five year. Um, how good the permits were good for and just some wording there. Um, but this is essentially, this is. The ordinance that was approved last time. Um, the recommendation this time around is to waive reading and read by title only. Um, and really I'm just here to answer questions. Uh, if there's anything we want to go over or, um, questions or anything we need to kind of examine in depth, I'm happy to do that.
All right. Do we have any questions on this item? I do not see any, so I will open it up to public comment. Do we have anybody here to speak on this item?
Susan, congratulations on being finished with your term. And also thank you for being a person that always responded to my emails as I begged, pleaded, cried over this issue. Because of the liability it put my profession at risk with. Um, I am still a little bit concerned about the fact that even if you put your home in a trust, it triggers this, this. You're not changing hands. You're not doing anything. You put your house in a trust. And you get hit with this ordinance. So there's a few things that I'm not happy with, but overall I'm really glad that you finally. Made a decision to, um, make it clear and easy and take the gray away from it. So thank you. Um, but like I said, it it bothers me that just, you know, my spouse dies, I put my kid on the title and we get hit with that. That's not quite right. Um, anyway, thank you for finally getting this done.
Thank you.
Hello, I I don't, I don't live in Eureka, but my daughter-in-law do. And I was just curious, um. I worked for the city of Arcata for thirty-some years at Public Works and I just. It just seems to me that the cities aren't really doing much for the public anymore. I mean, they're charging for everything and, uh. I'm, my fear is what's, is the, is the water line going to be required to be a city owner's responsibility to the main line from the meter? Uh, street work, is that going to be done? I I just don't know. When when's this going to stop as far as, uh. The city, uh, turning over responsibilities to the property owners. And the cost is, you know, what if people can't afford it, I I would assume there'd be a lien on their property or go on their taxes. That'd be my assumption. So I just, those are the questions I have. So, thanks.
Thank you. Do we have any other comments on this? How about on Zoom? Do we have any comments on Zoom? Seeing none, I will bring it back to council for a motion or discussion.
I'm sorry, I meant to ask, when are you guys going to start doing some major public announcements for this? I mean, this is going to be vital that people.
Will, will. Why didn't you communicate with, uh, Mr. Slattery? Um, he'll help you out with that. Okay. Um, so I'll bring it back for, uh, motion and discussion.
I I did have a question just for Bob and I, uh, it was a clarification about the, I think we talked about the trust matter last time, so, um. But it seemed like there was a little bit of head scratching up here. So could you, um, could you speak to that item?
I think I'm going to let Miles address it first because he remembers, I think, from the last discussion.
Yeah, from our last discussion, my recollection and Deputy Public Works Director Isa can correct me if I'm wrong, but if it's within the family, the trust. Um, this is not applicable, correct? Director Isa.
The current wording, um, is whenever any real property located within the city of Eureka is to be sold, transferred or vested in any other person or entity. Um, so I would refer that question to the city attorney as to whether that would cover transfer of a property into a trust within the family. If that is considered any other person or entity.
Well, I don't, it's not considered another person, a trust. I'd have to refresh on whether a revocable trust is a, a separate entity. I think that's what we're talking about. Um. And so. You know, I think maybe a bit of clarifying language would be in order. That would be the best way to handle it.
And we, if we did, uh, recommended the clarifying language, we wouldn't have to bring it back again, right?
No, because I think the intent, as I understand, the intent is not to trigger this provision. Uh, from a transfer into trust. And therefore we're just clarifying the intent with a bit of additional language. So it's not a change. It's not a substantive change.
That's what I was thinking. So can we, um. Yeah, if we make a motion and.
So you could, you could make the motion to adopt with the addition of clarifying language to be added by the city attorney.
Councilmember Royal.
That begs the question for me, not knowing a lot about trusts, is it only, is that something that only applies within families or can? Anyone put something into trust for someone else? Could you, people use this to basically get around our process, the intent being that infrastructure is improved?
Yeah, the, I think the clarifying language would have to preclude that.
Okay, okay.
And include what we want to see included. So. It's going to ta, it's not something that I would like to sit here and pen tonight. But I think that you're just talking about a phrase, basically a, a phrase or a sentence at most. at most, so.
So you think our intent can be captured without us having to bring it back?
I think so.
Okay.
But that's up to you. If you want to see it again, you could continue the adoption of this item until your next meeting. Absolutely no problem with that either.
I won't be here, so, whatever you all decide.
Councilmember Bregel.
I'm just curious if the clarifying sentence couldn't just say something about family member to family member, or something simple like that, that wouldn't be convoluted in trust?
That's the idea.
Then, yeah, I would, well, that being said, then I'll make the motion to...
Can I ask, before you phrase the motion, could I ask? It's always bothered me, and I don't know if it's a legal implication, has legal implications or not, but this phrase waive reading and read strikes me as contradictory. And so I always encourage you to put the word full, waive full reading, which would be to sit here and read the whole ordinance line by line, word by word. Anyway, that's a, just a pet thing of mine, so if you wouldn't mind putting that in.
There you go, that's going to be with the newer leadership.
Oh, and second, second thing is, the number two part of the recommendation, I believe should be a separate item, and maybe you were intending that way. There's a second action in regard to a staff position, and so that I would like to see as a separate motion, not included with the ordinance.
So, I see we have closed public comment, but it looks like you want to make a public comment. We haven't made the motion yet, so if you want to make it, you can come on in.
I just wanted to point out that in the, Mark and I remembered, sorry, I'm Felicia Costa with Humboldt Premier Properties and also a homeowner in Eureka. Mark and I remembered that there was some language in the sewer lateral ordinance that we were provided to review about transferring between family members, and it's under exceptions. 50.209, it says the property ownership transfer is between, there's an exception if the property ownership transfer is between family members and there is no assessment of property value.
Thank you for doing my job, because I remember that same thing.
Thank you very much. That was wonderful.
Reading that as well.
So, that might, that might change your motion.
So with that, I recommend that we waive full reading, read by title only, and adopt bill number 1021-CS, an ordinance of the city of Eureka amending Chapter 50 of the Eureka Municipal Code.
I'll second. This is like coming full circle for Kim and I.
Yes, it is, isn't it?
You all weren't here when this got vetoed before, and it was a whole thing, and so here we are again.
Yes, I will remind you all that I was not here when it got vetoed by the mayor.
It would really make a splash for your last full meeting, you know.
I'd just do it this time. No. Okay, so we have a motion, we have a second, we have any further discussion? All right, go ahead and vote.
Unanimous vote, councilmember Moulton absent, motion carries.
Right on. I feel like that was a whole community effort to get that done.
We have Part 2.0.
Oh, okay, Part 2.0.
Of this same item that Bob asked us to separate out. Are you ready for that?
Yes.
I move that we approve the allocation of one additional full-time equivalent engineering technician positioned to oversee the sewer lateral program.
Second.
Any discussion? All right.
Unanimous vote, councilmember Moulton absent, motion carries.
Excellent. With that, I think we will take a short break, and we will come back to discuss building standards codes. So we'll see you back here in five, seven minutes. And I would like to invite Building Official Riley.
Hey, can you guys hear me?
We can.
Sorry, for some reason, my camera on my home computer doesn't work. My apologies. In any event, good evening, mayor and council. This is the second reading for the Fire and Building Code Update Bills. They, these bills essentially mirror the California Building Standards Code with the addition of three appendices and some minor amendments by the Humboldt Bay Fire Joint Powers Authority. And like I mentioned last meeting, this was a pretty unremarkable update to the codes. And we have changed, we haven't changed anything since we introduced these at the last meeting, and staff recommends them both for adoption.
Thank you very much. Does anybody have any questions that have come up in the last couple weeks? All right, I will open it up to public comment. Then does anybody have any public comment on this item? Seeing none, I will close public comment and bring it back for a motion and/or discussion.
I'll make a motion to waive full reading and read by title only in a dot bill number 1023 CS, an ordinance of the city of Eureka amending Eureka Municipal Code Title 15, Chapter 150, including Sections 150.002 and 150.015 through 150.026, adopting by reference the 2022 additions of the California Building Standards Code and related model codes with appendices and amendments all related to building regulations. And waive full reading and read by title only in a dot bill number 1022 CS, an ordinance of the city of Eureka amending Eureka Municipal Code Title 9, Chapter 92, including Sections 92.01 through 92.07, adopting by reference the 2022 addition of the California Fire Code and related model code with appendices and amendments all relating to fire regulations.
Second.
All right. Everybody vote.
Unanimous yes vote, councilmember Moulton absent, motion carries.
Thank you very much, and now we are going to invite Director Millar to bring back the wastewater revenue refunding bonds.
Right, good evening, mayor and city council. I'm going to share my screen. So at the last meeting, we approved the water revenue refunding bonds, and tonight we have the wastewater. So the wastewater fund has two active debt obligations. We have the 2003 CS CBA bonds and a 2011 bond. A summary of the current debt, so right now, our debt outstanding is over $13 million, and the average rate is about 4.95%. So back on October 18th, the city council adopted a resolution that established the financing team that was PSM, Warwick Harrington, and Setcliffe, our bond counsel, and our placement agent, Brandon Paulman. It also authorized staff to approve a term sheet from the preferred bank. So on the October 26th, we received the bids. We've got six different offers with interest rates ranging from 4.7% to 5.4%. The team selected T-Bank at a rate of 4.7%. So staff recommends proceeding with the wastewater revenue refunding bonds, Series 2022, for the following reasons. This transaction will result in approximately $1 million in cash savings over the life of the remaining bond, and it will reduce the administrative burden by consolidating two debt obligations into one. So here's my recommendation, and that's all I have tonight.
All right. Does anybody have any questions for Director Millar that have come up over the last couple weeks? She's been pondering this. All right. Do we have any public comment on this item, either in-house or on Zoom? Nothing on Zoom? Okay, I will go ahead and close public comment, and I'll bring it back for motion, discussion, or both? All right.
I'd like to make the motion to adopt the attached resolution of the city of Eureka approving the issuance of the wastewater revenue refunding bonds, Series 2022, in order to refund certain outstanding obligations of the city of Eureka and approve the execution and delivery of an indenture of trust, placement agent agreement, and other documents relating thereto, and providing for other matters properly relating to the wastewater revenue refunding bonds, Series 2022.
I'll second.
All right. Everybody vote.
Unanimous yes vote, councilmember Moulton absent, motion carries.
Thank you very much. Now we're moving on to reports and action items. At this time, I'd like to invite Ken Bates up from the California Fishermen's Resiliency
Good evening, Mayor Siemens, city council, and city staff. My name is Ken Bates. I've been in before you guys a lot of times over the last 30 years. I'm here today representing the California Fishermen's Resiliency Association. It's a new nonprofit that's formed to deal with some of the wind power stuff. I'd also like to do something that I generally don't do at these meetings. I'd like to go ahead and describe my, my relationship to energy consumption. I'm a third-generation California fisherman. I was born in 1949, and I've been on the boat since I was 16. I've been in Humboldt County since 1970, and I have been fishing out of the Port of Eureka since 1974. Generally speaking, early in the spring, my wife and I pack our boat up, it's like early September, I mean, early April, pack the boat up, and we leave for four to five months. The boat that we fish on is 32 feet long. It's got a cabin that's eight foot by nine, there's two bunks, there's all electronics and the controls for the vessel, and there's a diesel stove and a sink. We make back-to-back four-day trips, and mostly fishing salmon, and at the end of our salmon season, we come back here and switch over, and we fish anchovies and sardines. The, the cool thing right now is that this kind of fishing is now being described as small boat artisanal fishing. We don't think of it that way, but that's what the government thinks that we're doing. A year, it was about 10 years ago, it was almost 15 actually, we decided to go to Alaska and work up there. And we started looking at our fuel budget to go to Alaska. We typically ran around the ocean at 14 to 16 knots. That's kind of what we did, you know, a small fast boat, we could do that. Looking at the fuel that we're going to burn, it was irresponsible to operate the boat like that. And so for the last 15 years, we've run at seven knots. We cut our fuel bill by two-thirds. That's pretty significant. We live off, we live in the city limits, but we live off the grid. I've been off the grid for, gosh, I don't know, almost 48 years. We run our house on two solar panels and a wind turbine. We have, at last count, we had eight light bulbs. We have a stereo and a TV set, there's a vacuum cleaner. I'm checked out on using the vacuum cleaner, so that's pretty cool. 10 years ago, we bought our first small car. I've only had big pickup trucks that I've driven around, and now we've got a car that gets 40 miles to the gallon instead of 10. So, you know, we're, I'm very conscious, my wife and I are conscious, and most of the fishermen that we talk to are conscious enough about, about what's going on and the things that we're challenged with. I'd like to make one other comment, and that is, I've been lucky enough to represent this fishing fleet for just over 30 years, and all the fishermen that you see at meetings, and all, whether they're young or they're old, none of the fishermen are ever paid for their time. They're uncompensated, there's no subsidies, that kind of stuff. The guys that show up at the meetings and the women that show up at the meetings are there because they like what they do, and they want to preserve that lifestyle. So these are sort of preliminary comments to what I'd like to talk about tonight, and if I could get Pam to push the button on the first slide, we'd get started there. There we go. So the first slide. So fishermen are not opposed to renewable energy. We see what's going on in the ocean, and it's, in some places, it's pretty, pretty dramatic. You know, the last three or four years, there's been these hot water events off of Oregon and Washington, they only refer to it as the blob. We've seen low O2 areas on the Oregon coast where the oxygen levels are low enough where it'll kill bait in the bait tanks as the boat goes through these areas. This year, we've had yellowfin and bluefin tuna off of Shelter Cove. You know, we're seeing mahi-mahi off of Trinidad and Claraup into southern Oregon. Those are all things that, that are typically unusual. There was bluefin schools off of Shelter Cove two weeks ago, even this late in the year. So we see stuff changing in the oceans. I mean, we kind of get it, and we know that we have to change the way that we're operating. But one of our concerns is to try, fishermen are going to struggle with how to accommodate the wind power projects, not to stop them, but how to survive them. So we can hit the next one. Cool. If you look at these numbers here, we're talking about if the state is successful in, in their wind power energy goals, we're looking at about 2,000 square miles of fishing grounds that are going to be, have to be used for turbines, and then another, anywhere from 800 to 1,000 miles, square miles, that will use for cable lanes. The turbines will end up being areas that are unfishable just because of the fact that they're floaters, and we could go into a lot of detail, but we won't do that. The cable lanes are problematic for any kind of ground contact fishing gear, you know. So typically, what the cable companies do is they ask fishermen to stay away from those, half a mile buffer on either side. So that we could look at the next slide here, and I, and we could talk a little bit. I just want to give you some, Miles' favorite thing when I talk is to give you some history, you know. So if you look, 2015 was when the first wind power projects were suggested for central California off of Morro Bay. And the fishermen's associations down there, there was three wind power companies that showed up, you know, they were going to put in unsolicited bids. One company kept coming back again and again. They ended up interacting at length with the city of Morro Bay, and they ended up having four years worth of meetings with the two fishermen's associations, the Morro Bay Fishermen's Organization, and the Port San Luis Fishermen's Associations. And that was, that, that, that company ended up becoming a consortium called Castle Wind. Castle Wind, today, we think, Castle Wind is in the process of bidding for one of those leases down there. The Morro Bay Fishermen and Castle Wind ended up, it took them quite a while, but they negotiated a fishing community benefit agreement, you know, between those two companies before the lease, and we'll get into that in a little bit. Up here in 2017, Redwood Coast Energy Authority basically decided to do the same thing with the wind power project up here. Initially, it was a pretty small project, it was going to be a couple turbines, and then it was 10, and then it was 17. And so again, today, these areas are coming up for lease. 2017, Matthew Marshall reached out to Humboldt Fishermen's Marketing Association, of which I'm still a board member, and we began our dialogue and conversation with RCEA about how we could, how we could survive these projects and get along. In 2018, our association negotiated a memorandum of understanding with RCEA, which basically allowed us to be at the table when RCEA invited the wind power companies to make presentations, which was pretty cool to get to do. I made it clear at the time when these various developers came in that fishermen were not supportive of losing the fishing grounds. That being said, Matthew didn't throw us out of the room. The next thing that happened is that all during these, from 2017, we have continually had meeting after meeting after meeting with state agencies. Coastal Commission, State Lands, the Energy Commission, Fish Game, and during those meetings, people continued to ask fishermen at the meetings, could you just point at the map and show us where you fish? Like it's, this is the spot, could you just show us that's where it is, and then we'll just go do this somewhere else? And that's not, fishing doesn't work like that. Fish move, and fishermen move all over the place with them. The last thing that happened is in this year, in January, we formed the California Fishermen's Resiliency Association, and we'll talk about that in a little bit. So, but first, I'd like to talk about mapping, and we'll get Pam to switch this. So what ended up happening with, happening with the mapping inquiries from these agencies again and again and again, is initially Humboldt State University decided that they were going to map fishing grounds, and they came to the fishermen's associations, the fishermen had, wanted absolutely nothing to do with it. They, fishermen have had such a difficult... They, fishermen have had such a difficult time getting through the marine protected area process that, you know, they objected on two reasons. The first thing is when I, if I'm a fisherman and I get up and I tell you something, like I just told you about bluefin tuna, that's anecdotal. It's not until a scientist repeats that that it has any horsepower. So, fishermen objected to the fact that Humboldt State was going to go ahead, interview fishermen to find out where they fish, charge OPC three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, essentially turning our information into a commodity, you know, and then putting together this document. At one of the meetings, Harrison Iback, who's now our young president, basically said to all these agencies, we'll do our own mapping. I have never seen so many unhappy faces in a room. There was no smiles whatsoever. Nobody wanted to see fishermen do mapping. And so, Harrison basically put out this thing, we're going to do it, and then after the meeting, he turned to myself and Linda Hildebrand and says, can you write the grant application? And the two of us wrote a grant application, we got ninety thousand dollars from Ocean Protection Council. We basically also put together a contract, and we had a contractual agreement with the Crescent City Fishermen's Association, Humboldt Fishermen's Marketing Association, and Salmon Trollers Marketing Association in Fort Bragg. And that contract basically spelled out exactly what we were going to do amongst the associations. We had a scientific mentor that we hired, and we produced these maps. So, what these maps are, this is an online site, you can go to this, and you can look at all the different fisheries, even the minor fisheries up here, some of the in-bay fisheries that we have, even stuff like surf melt and stuff, all the fisheries are on here. And this particular project went from kind of the bottom of Ocean Protection Council's list to second to the top, you know, and it turned out now what we have is we've got a baseline, so we can see the changes over time in fishing areas, you know, as we continue to watch the ocean warm. The other thing we have is that now any wind power company or any developer or a cable company can come in and see that there's actually activity here. Before we did this mapping, the information that was in the vaults of California Fish and Wildlife was wildly inaccurate and incomplete. So, we finished our mapping project, and within a week or two, the Coastal Commission went to the Morro Bay guys and said, we want you to do the same mapping, and they've done a similar project. So, the next thing, I guess you could, yeah, thanks. So, the next thing that happened during this whole process, again, is that the state agencies asked repeatedly, well, how come, we can't ever get a hold of anybody? You know, we just would wish, wish there was one people, somebody we could talk to. Every time we call, someone's gone, there'll be answers, we get your machine, you're out in the ocean, and they ask us to come up with a single entity to deal with the wind power stuff. And so, in August of two thousand and twenty, we were having about a four-hour meeting at our marketing association meeting room down at Commercial Street, and we were discussing with the state agencies about trying to put this thing together, and Karen Douglas, who's now works directly for the governor at the Energy Commission, she says, well, we would like to fund this. And at that particular moment, we weren't sure if you handed us the money that we would know what to do. But we did some more research, and we ended up going ahead, and we incorporated the California Fishermen's Resiliency Association. And at that point, we went back, and we went to Ocean Protection Council, and we ended up getting a ninety-eight thousand dollar grant that is, it rolls over, it's good for five years. The thing that's interesting about that is that the way we got started is that Redwood Coast Energy Authority, basically, when Matthew and the board could see that the local fishermen's association here was struggling paying our attorney's fees, they decided that they would reach out to us and try to help us get over that hump. And so, instead of just using that on the twenty thousand dollar grant from the local power provider here, we used that to form this new association. One of the things that we're required to do is that we answer to the Coastal Commission, we answer to State Lands, we answer to the Energy Commission, and Ocean Protection Council. Our grant application requires that we have a bunch of deliverables, and those deliverables include board reports. We've, I think we're on our twelfth or thirteenth board report since January, so anytime we have a meeting or phone calls, any of that kind of stuff, those board reports are widely distributed. One of the things that we're very concerned about here is that if we're not super, super transparent in what we're doing, we will fail. The last thing that fishermen are good at is being informed, so these things get broadcast pretty widely. The other deliverables are two fishing community benefit agreements, you know, they're contracts, they're templates for OPC and for other organizations to use. We have a couple white papers that we're working on. We've got one that is about seven or eight pages now that lists impacts that we expect to see here in the Humboldt wind energy area, and then another paper on the value of fishing. Thank you. So, these are the, these are some of the things that we're looking at when we're talking about how to get along with the wind power stuff. The young fishermen that are looking at this are terrified about what's happening. I actually think that there's a way forward for this community and for the fishing industry to figure out how to get through some of the problems, but the very first thing to do for us is to avoid the impacts. You know, the more impacts that you can avoid, the less that it costs the developer, the less it costs the fishermen, and the more benefits there are to the community. So, for us right now, what we're looking at is, we're looking at is methods of avoiding impacts. The second thing is, is that there's some impacts that were going to be difficult to avoid, but we can, but they're seasonal, you know. So, again, working with a developer, we're working with Crowley that's now going to do the heavy lift dock, and they'll probably be the ones towing these units in and out of the bay. You know, there's another way there to go ahead and minimize impacts to the fishing, you know, through scheduling, that kind of thing. The last thing, the last thing is mitigation, you know, and that's down, that's at the very bottom of the list. Let's see, where am I on my list here? Yeah. So, we could go ahead and flip one more, Pam, thank you. So, I want to talk a little bit about the fishing community agreement deal, and I need to emphasize, it is not a bag of cash. Everybody thinks that there's going to be huge amount of monies coming off of these projects. Fishermen don't think that. We think that the stuff that Bohm has arranged, the bid credits that were, you know, that are, the community's been talking about, they're all voluntary. And so, for us, our direction is different than some other groups, but what we're looking at here is industry-to-industry agreements, and these are not new to the fishing industry. The first, the first agreement between industry and industry was down in Santa Barbara. It basically got put together a couple years after the oil spill that they have down there when the, had a platform blow out, you know, in the late sixties, I think. As there's been more and more oil infrastructure down there, the fishing community agreement down there has been really, really good about keeping the crew boats out of the fishing gear, they've got lanes to run through. There's policies now on how pipelines go in so that they're snag-free, so that gear can go across them without getting hung up. So, all of those things have been going for a long time. The other thing that's interesting is that in the central coast, in nineteen ninety-nine, AT&amp;T and Verizon showed up there, and they wanted to run two fiber cable, optic cables onto the beach, they were coming across the Pacific. At that time, they sat down and they talked to the fishermen's associations down there and said, we know we're going to impact your fishing, we know we're going to stop your work when we're working and doing our survey work, we don't want you to fish on the cables, and we're willing to figure out some way to mitigate. So, that caused the formation of the Central California Cable Fisheries Liaison Fund. AT&amp;T, at the time, they offered a hundred thousand dollars per year per cable for those cables to cross through the fishing grounds. That particular cable fund has been unbelievably successful. They now manage about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars per year. There isn't a single fisherman that gets a payment from it. There are no individual payments to fishermen. What that money goes for, it goes for infrastructure in the Port of Morro Bay, it goes for safety programs, there's, they've got scholarships. Some of the money goes to fund other fishermen's organizations that are nonprofits that are cash poor, and they use that money to send guys to Washington DC on rare occasions, those kind of things, but it's broadly based. So, one of the things I want you to keep in mind is that in nineteen ninety-nine, those payments were a hundred thousand dollars. Those same payments today, if we negotiated this down there with those same guys, you know, using the cost of living and everything, would be about a hundred and sixty. Okay, Pam, thanks. All right. So, this is a little bit difficult. Fishermen, our local fishermen's association watched the Terre Gen project. We got repeated calls again and again from people on both sides of that project asking us to comment on it. It was outside of our area of expertise. We never said a word, positive or negative, about the Terre Gen thing, but then we got to see the board of supervisors just get bombarded with two days, I think there were fourteen-hour days, of people lined up down the block, and it was terrifying. You know, and during our conversations at our board meetings, you know, nobody wanted to be in a situation like that. So, one of the things that we decided to do is we decided to approach both the county and the city of Eureka with a MO, method, MOC, memorandum of cooperation, a non-binding agreement that just said, hey, when these projects come to town, before the developer gets to the point where he spent millions of dollars in permits, we'd like to have everybody cooperate and sit down and talk and see if there's some way to make these, to smooth the bumps out. Not to stop the projects, but to better understand and not be in a position where fishermen had three minutes at a hearing, you know, with a hundred people behind them. There was really no enthusiasm from the county or the city for those, for that agreement. The next thing that happened is that we had the opportunity to have another fiber optic cable landed up here, that's the Eureka Echo cable. And the company that landed that cable had signed the Morro Bay Agreement. They have a couple cables in Morro Bay. Two years before they actually applied for a coastal permit, that company came up here and they found five fishermen, three guys from here and three guys from southern Oregon that were willing to sign an agreement. The agreement that they signed is not the agreement that they had, that the Morro Bay guys, those associations had used, it was a different agreement. It was a, it was a private agreement, and when they finally got to the point where the cable company, cable representative company had come to the Coastal Commission, you know, the Coastal Commission basically had one sentence, State Lands had the same thing, it says there has to be an agreement between the cable company and the fishermen, and that, that basically checked the box. At that time, Humboldt Fishermen's Marketing Association and twelve other fishermen's associations had essentially gone back to the Coastal Commission with the Morro Bay Agreement, and there was three hundred and fifty fishermen that had signed on to that, and we had tried to essentially pressure the Coastal Commission into accepting this wider, more inclusive democratic agreement. We ran into two things, and the first thing was, is the Coastal Commission didn't have protocols or language that was strong enough to allow them to make that, to make that jump. But the second thing was, is that, is that there was wide support from the cities and municipalities around here in the college for their first agreement, not really understanding what got, what got signed. That agreement up here, those cables are going to go in at seventy-five thousand dollars per year. That's less than half the adjusted rate for two thousand and twenty-two. Eventually, when those cables come in, they will cost this community about nine million dollars that we did, that we didn't get in mitigation fees. And again, these cable agreements are not set up to pay fishermen, they're set up to pay the community that gets distributed. So, one of the things that I would caution all of us, and I got to speak to the supervisors this morning, is that, is that to be aware of some of the intricacies of these agreements and how they affect the fishing fleet and how they affect the community. One more slide. So, I also want to talk about local knowledge, and I was trying to think of good examples of this, and the one example that I can really think of is the example of the tribal members that were living on the Klamath River. Those people got to watch the Klamath salmon stocks go down and down and down and down and down for years. And twenty years ago, they started efforts to try to fix, figure out how to fix that river. Other people knew that there was a problem there, but the people that really knew that was a problem were the native populations that relied on that fish. Today, we're finally getting those dams out, it's taken a long time, but we're finally doing that. Fishermen in Eureka watched the Eureka waterfront basically just essentially disintegrate, you know, starting in about nineteen sixty-five or sixty-six. And Humboldt Fishermen's Marketing Association, their board had decided that maybe what we tried to do is we would try to change some of that by trying to purchase the Lazio property at the foot of C Street after the restaurant had closed and the building was pretty much falling down. It took us eighteen years to do that. We had drawings, we had Philippe Laporte that did all the design work for us, everything. We had, we started a nonprofit land trust, went to the Coastal Conservancy, and all of those things failed. But what didn't fail was that we had a turnover in City Hall, and we eventually got to the point where we had a council, and we had a city manager and a public works director, you know, that got it, and they'd all come up through the ranks. You know, they weren't from the outside area, and we were able to be co-applicants for building Eureka Fishermen's Terminal, and that's kind of how that got built, and it's another city asset. So, the last thing on this is that I just want you guys to be aware that there's, you know, that we have two lease sites out here, they're directly, directly outside of an area called the Rock Pile. It's been fished since there was boats big enough to go out there and fish. Probably two-thirds of the groundfish boats out of Eureka fish right there, and the spot that got picked for the wind power area by Bureau of Ocean Energy Management is essentially that spot. Fishermen did not have any opportunity to comment on that, and the spots that Bohm picked and the central coast were the same. So, we know that eventually there's going to be more of these projects, and we're hoping between our mapping and the fact that we have experience here, and that we could come and ask for your assistance at some minor level, that we can avoid some of losing the fishing grounds that we have. Again, we're not, we're not opposed to these projects, but we are concerned about losing the grounds. And we're down to our last slide, and Pam's going to show it. So, basically, it's just, we know, we think that we can, we think we can coexist with these big projects. We appreciate that the work that the county's done, you know, we appreciate the work that the Core Hub's doing, you know, fishermen for this particular project are representing fishermen, so we're not actually part of any specific group, but the association that we formed right now, you know, has fishermen's associations clear down to Santa Barbara, you know, for the, for the purpose of looking at state policy. So, that's kind of what we're doing, and I'm, thank you for letting me come tonight, I appreciate being here, thanks. Yeah, questions at all?
Thanks, Ken, does anybody have any questions? And Councilmember Royal?
Well, it seems like there's a lot of emphasis on, you know, both funding from the state and working with the state on data, and, you know, I think one head-scratcher for me has really just been the federal waters component of all of this, you know. Obviously, there's transmission infrastructure and the onshore infrastructure that'll be, you know, in state or even county jurisdiction, but the, you know, the turbines themselves being in federal waters is, you know, raises questions for me about, you know, ultimately, you know, what, what level of control we do have locally. And I understand that you're talking about, you know, community benefits agreement that's specific to the fishing community, the commercial fishing community, but I, yeah, I'm just wondering, you know, what, what have you heard about, about this from the federal government?
So, it's really interesting. Your point's a good one. The federal government is essentially almost non-responsive. We have been writing letters to the federal government, to Bureau of Ocean Energy Management for four years. We have been at meeting after meeting. Most of the fishermen at the meeting can, basically, can mouth all the words on the slides, we've seen them so many times. You know, that being said, we've had very, very little impact on anything that the federal government has done to date. This is the same thing that's going on in the East Coast, and it will go on in the Gulf. Recently, the federal government put out, Bohm put out a thirteen-page, it's called, it's a guideline for mitigation of impacts to recreational and commercial fishing, and great title, they say that, yeah, they acknowledge there's going to be impacts. The second thing underneath there after that is a disclaimer, and it says that this document has no force or effect of law, and that everything in it is essentially a recommendation. And so, our argument with Bohm has been, hey, here's an agency, a federal agency responsible for leasing, you know, huge tracts- here's an agency, a federal agency responsible for, for leasing, you know, huge tracts, you know, of the coastal oceans, and they don't have any regulatory power over the leases. And that's what BOM says. So, one of the things that we're doing right now is we're, is we're trying to work with the Coastal Commission and the lands commission, state lands commission and the energy commission to form a working group so that we can start to figure out how we're gonna avoid this stuff. There has to be some rules. It will be chaos if there isn't rules. So, we're having the same trouble that a lot of other people are having trying to get the attention of the federal government.
And, and I'll just say this one other thing and then pass the mic. I know other people probably have lots of questions or comments on this. But, you know, the folks behind Lost Coast Wind are the, um, many of the same players, you know, from the Klamath Basin. To give that as an example, um, you know, I, I'm not sure what your relationship has been so far with them. But, um, you know, the, um, strategy of getting, you know, I'm on the board for the Klamath River Renewal Corporation and we, you know, obviously that was a long, long fight that I've only been part of directly for the last couple of years. But, um, you know, the, um, federal government's involvement was really critical. Um, but it took, you know, it, it took some direct actions to, to get there. So, um, you know, I, I would say, um, it's, it's hard to see that this process will, you know, will be similar. Um, but, uh, you know, certainly some lessons learned there. So, anyway, Lost Coast Wind seemed like a good, um, think tank for partnering with.
Well, thank you. Yeah, and we, we have, we have yet to have any, any discussion with the folks that have recently formed that.
Yeah.
But it, it will come up, I'm sure it will.
I mean, a lot of them are the key players from the Klamath, Klamath, uh,
Yeah.
basin, so, yeah, they, they, um,
Way more involvement in this community than on the East Coast. The East Coast, just, it just happened to them.
Yeah, yeah, cool. Well, thanks for presenting this and I, yeah, I think I was, I was a little maybe surprised when you came to a previous meeting when Amy Jester presented and it seemed like, um, oh yeah, we've got our own kind of, we've got our own process. And so, you know, the Core Hub isn't us and we're not, you know, we're not really doing the same process. Um, and I was worried that, you know, um, I'm not sure how much bandwidth the developers have to, um, meet with different entities to develop, you know, community, a whole, a whole suite of community benefits agreements. Um, I imagine their hope is to develop something simple and put all their money in one pot and then let the community kind of figure out how that gets divided. Um, and so, I don't know if that's been your experience with them, but, but that's kind of, um, wha- what I think they want. Um, so, you know, if you're not able to achieve your goals independently from that community benefits process that they're doing, you know, do you see partnering with the local community groups?
I think that we're all gonna end up working together at some level. But I would caution everyone, again, the, you know, the California fishing industry right now, all these ports are looking at avoidance. That's our first thing, you know, that's really it. And the, the second thing is to try to minimize, and, you know, and if we're successful in doing that, the fishing community benefit agreement templates that are around right now, you know, are pages and pages and pages of protocols for how vessels are gonna work on the ground, how there's gonna be lanes, you know, who's gonna, who's gonna do what. There's a twenty-four hour hotline, you know, if there's a problem with, with gear hung up or those kind of things. And so, it's, it, our focus for the last six years, we've been at this six years already up here, is, is somewhat different than, than I think that the Core Hub. But there are some places where we overlap, you know, and hopefully there'll be some strength there. Yeah.
Councilmember Bauer.
You've done an amazing amount of work. Um, it was a great presentation. I, I really thank you for, for the education that I've received. You know, I serve on the RCEA board. Um, and all we talk about is wind, right? Wind energy, transmission. And I think about the future. I mean, getting, getting power out of here if we build out what's proposed, right? We're also talking about a cable maybe going through the ocean, you know, not going across land. And it just makes me concerned about, hurts my head to think about long-term resiliency. You know, you, you, that's one of the things that immediately jumps out to me is, you know, what does long-term resilience mean for our fishing community if we have a giant wind farm and cables everywhere? I mean, Ken?
I can answer that question.
Please.
So, to, to me, is the first thing, and this is something that Humboldt Fishermen's Association has been talking about since nineteen seventy, is no not, no net loss of fishing infrastructure, you know, in the Port of Humboldt Bay. So, that's the first thing. Uh, young fishermen, recently, we had an open port meeting, we had fifty guys there. You know, and near the end of the meeting, one guy got up and said, what's the point of having infrastructure if we can't get out of the harbor? And that's a good point. But, but I, my point is, if you have infrastructure, you can make the case to get out of the harbor. You know, they know that, that during the time that these turbines are being assembled here, you know, there could be anywhere from five to twenty-five of them on moorings or, or, you know, held here until the weather is good enough to move. The Coast Guard has already told us and the people that we've talked to from Avangrid on the East Coast that there's a ninety-nine percent chance that the, the entrance will be closed while they're moving this equipment in or out. So, guys are thinking, God, the only time it's flat, they're gonna close the place, what if I can't get back in? Okay? I don't think like that. I think that the thing to do, you know, is to be proactive. And so, we've already written letters to the Coast Guard in Washington DC. Says, look, we know this is gonna happen and we want you to think about right now in your traffic plan, how you're gonna escort vessels in and out if it, if it occurs where guys have to get back in, you know, while they're moving these things. I think there's ways around that, and that's part of what creates the resiliency. What creates problems here? And we're seeing it with guys that are, have a head full of gray hair like me. These guys that want to sell their boats and nobody's interested, Miles might buy one. But also the young guys, there's this black cloud hanging over their head. They don't know what's gonna happen here. Everybody's worried about whether or not they're gonna get to stay in Eureka. And, and so, part of our goal with this is to plug all those holes. And, you know, and say, look, we can do this and this and this. You know, this is what you're gonna have, we can do these things, you know, if it takes, you know, right now, we're gonna end up, we're trying to talk about how we're gonna move fishermen off of Redwood Terminal One that are over there. You know, and how we can relocate, relocate them? How we can relocate them in a place that's properly zoned and set up for them? So, all of those things are, they're cumulative impacts. You know, they're little pieces, but that's what it'll take to keep the fishing fleet here. There's a lot of opportunity to fish out here. You know, right now, we're limited by markets and we're limited by cold storage. But that can always change, you know. But if you look at places like San Francisco, Sausalito, um, Richmond, Oakland, all of those places lost their fishing fleets. They, they gentrified their waterfront. All those places lost the fleets, they'll never get them back. San Francisco's got a handful of boats, you know. We still have something that's worth saving here. And so, part of our job is to try to avoid the problems. That's really what it is.
Thank you.
Yeah. Well, thank you very much this evening. I appreciate being able to talk.
Do we have any public comment? Oh, do we have any public comment on this item now that my microphone is on? All right. See none, I will bring it back and I will also thank you. Oh, we do have a hand now. Oh. Um, I will think. That's communication by. I don't know, that's some skills. Now they're doing them all.
That was a really good presentation though.
That was a really good presentation and, uh, I think very useful. Um, even though many of these decisions are being made outside of the city of Eureka, it's super important that we stay informed, um, from all the stakeholders about.
I, I think that, uh, Mr. Bates brought up a very good point. And we've been discussing it with, um, the Fisherman's Marketing Association and potentially the Conservancy of the onshore, you know, implications and what can be done to preserve zoning and other things to make sure that, you know, fishing gear and those type of things still have, um, um, a place to go. And I think that, um, but a really good point is our infrastructure and, and maintaining that infrastructure, not only for fishermen, but also for offshore wind. I mean, we're gonna need expansion of facilities and maintenance of facilities in order for this to be successful, so.
There's a lot involved. Um, and we will move on to the, well, first future agenda items. Natalie, you don't get to pick any. Or maybe we can, maybe we could just say all the hard things we wanna see on the future agendas. Anybody have anything they wanna add to a future agenda item? Natalie, I mean.
Thinking about what, uh, public commentators said earlier about public meetings, um, and remaining online. I'd just like to, this isn't necessarily a future agenda item, but I don't think this council has talked about how, um, you know, for the foreseeable future, you wanna continue to, um, provide an online meeting space or not? Um, and whether to consider including language about, um, you know, I, I know some jurisdictions are considering language about, um, having a video on or some other way of verifying the person's, um, identity. Um, or having, um, people go through the process with Zoom or other platforms where they, um, just go through a verification process that basically proves that they have, it's just an extra step to consider taking. So, something you might wanna consider talking about in the future. But, um, I would certainly love to jump on and participate, um, electronically after, after my board meetings if I have the chance. Um, and sometimes there's the chance to do that. So, um, you know, I know that would be more feasible for a lot of folks, including me, to keep participating, so.
There is every intention of continuing, um, the hybrid component. I think that the only thing that may change is that, you know, we adopt that, um, resolution every month that has Assembly Bill three forty-one, three sixty-one, which allows for, um, elected officials to be off-site and do it without doing appropriate posting. So, when the COVID emergency goes away, I believe that resolution will go away. And so, the only thing that would change if that's going hybrid is that if a council member elected to do it at their house or at a hotel, that wherever that location is, would need to be posted with the appropriate time, letting people know if they wanted to come into their hotel room and make public comment or have a discussion that they could do so. But the, the hybrid component for the public, and we, staff really sees it as an advantage for consultants, um, cost savings, those type of things for some of the out-of-the-area consultants to do presentations and other things like that.
The, the part was the, um, you know, public comment in how do you account for who people are? Councilmember Braga.
I think that's a great idea. I would be interested in bringing that back of how we can make sure that people that are online are actually the people that are online. Um, and then I'm curious if somebody, so what if somebody is sick and they don't, they could still be online, but they don't wanna expose people, but they don't realize they're sick until two days before the meeting, they couldn't post?
I was being a little facetious about letting them come in, but they definitely have to post the, their location.
On the agenda or?
Ye- yes, there is, um, a new provision in the Brown Act. And I was planning on bringing that forward at the second meeting in January, getting ready for the end of the COVID emergency that the governor proclaimed, and I think it ends in February. So, I will be bringing all of that back. But, um, that is correct. Uh, a quorum of the council will have to be present in the, uh, chambers. And we will have to know in advance, seventy-two hours in advance in order for you to participate from, uh, an outside location.
Well, I'd be interested in hearing about all of it. I don't know about you guys.
Well, I don't know if I get to give a thumbs up, but I, I will say that AB twenty-four forty-nine, it does seem like there's some lack of clarity. I think a lot of bodies are, sorry, swallowed water down the wrong way. Um, there's some lack of clarity, I think, in the language about what constitutes an emergency. And maybe that's something that, um, I know other boards are struggling with that as well, about how to define that and who gets to define that and for how long, maybe it's clearer than I thought. But, um, that might be something that our city attorney would wanna delve into as well.
Correct, yes. And we, um, can definitely, uh, look at, um, rules within the Brown Act uh, that we can utilize for, uh, for public participation in Zoom. Um, the Brown Act does not require, uh, speakers to identify themselves. Uh, but I do believe there's nothing in the Brown Act. It's silent about, um, like, turning your video on so that we know it's a person there. And perhaps not a internet, um, type of recording that's, you know, been played around, um, the nation. So, and we're all aware of that. So, I definitely think that there's, uh, some guidelines that we can utilize.
Right on. Um, so now we're gonna go to the city manager's report, which is the last part of the meeting before we do our council reports. And, um, I was flattered and cried because I thought Miles was thinking, I mean, city manager Slattery was thinking of me. Um, and just really genuinely happy, even though that wasn't how he decided to pick this. That the last thing you're gonna talk about is Little Saplings preschool.
It definitely was. It was actually, I have to give Shannon the credit for this. It was Shannon's idea. Um, but since Mr. Bates is still here, I'd like to start off with a little bit of history about, about the, um, Little Saplings program. So, back in two thousand, late two thousand seventeen, um, we were having a lot of issues with recruitment and retention, um, especially in public safety. And we were looking at alternative ideas on how to, um, enhance, you know, people wanting to come to the city and, and be employees with the city. Started out just preliminarily looking at, um, a daycare center. Then in two thousand eighteen, our mayor Seaman was, um, elected. And we went through strategic visioning process. During that strategic visioning process, that was kind of codified that that's something that we wanted to look into and start a, um, a, um, preschool, not a daycare, sorry, a preschool. Um, and so, we wanted to make sure that it was legitimate as possible. Um, in early two thousand eighteen, um, started looking into that, started working with the state. Um, became one of the first in California municipally operated, state-certified, um, uh, preschool. Um, and the reason for that was so that we could offer reduced rates to our employees, um, for, um, childcare for between two and a half to five-year-old, um, children. Um, we finally got, not finally, but we, we certified in two thousand and nineteen and opened up our doors in March of two thousand and nineteen and been in place ever since. Um, more recently, once again, having recruitment and retention problems, we looked at alternative ways to, um, en- enhance the benefits of our employees. And what once was half-off for our employees is currently, um, completely free for our employees. And that's definitely, um, benefited the enrollment of, of, of the families in our, our days, in our, um, pre, preschool program. So, Little Saplings currently, um, since August of two thousand twenty-two, we have twelve new families that have enrolled. Um, we currently have five city families, um, in the program and one Humboldt Bay Fire family. Um, we have two more city families that are about to be enrolled, um, coming up after the first of the year. Um, we have two separate programs, kind of the older children are in the Pine Cones and the younger children are in the Twigs. Um, currently, the Twig classroom is, is at full enrollment. And, um, Nancy, excuse me, Director Danelle, um, is the director of the program, is looking at moving some of them, older students up to the Pine Cones to make room for enrollments because we do have a lot of requests and demand for younger, um, um, family members in the classroom. So, uh, we recently looked at, um, expanding because we knew that when we went free, we have an expectation that we're gonna have more interest in, 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 um, hopefully, families within the city coming there. We're in the process of applying for, um, another room that used to be our ceramics room so that we can add more children there and make our capacity up to thirty. Um, so, in preparation for that, we have recently hired a new full-time employee and another regular part-time employee. Um, and of course, the temporary staff that we have there as well. So, over the course of the last few months, students have, uh, they've held a pumpkin parade for family and friends. They've hosted a fancy lunch, um, included real china plates and, and talk about table manners. And they finished off with a pumpkin pie and lots of whipped cream. Uh, in December, the school hopes to host a, a hot cocoa afternoon. And of course, Mayor Seaman, you will be invited with families as a way to celebrate the winter season. So, I just wanna, um, thank Mayor Seaman for her children's initiative and, and getting behind this. And definitely, um, it's been a huge benefit to the city. Um, and, uh, And I wish that I could have taken advantage of it when I was first hired here because my children would have qualified, but it's definitely helped and each time when we first implemented it, we saw an increase in recruitment and I think that now that it's free, we're seeing that same increase in recruitment, so it's definitely served its purpose and it's been a huge benefit for the city and I really want to thank Executive Assistant Fazio, she was the reason why this happened, she was the one who went out to the state, figured out all the bureaucracy that needed to happen in order for us to get, make this happen. And I also want to thank Director Donnell, who has done a great job, she's been our director since the beginning and of course, with a lot of support from the rest of our staff, so with that, that's all I have.
I just want to say, this is really rare. It's really rare for this to be done at a municipal level and we are, I'm so proud, so proud of this city for recognizing how important it is. I think, you would think these things would roll off my tongue, I think right now it's 25% of families who need childcare can find it, 75% of families who need childcare cannot find it, especially good quality preschools like we're offering here. I will say Supervisor Wilson was really interested in this, so if you learn anything and take it to the county, I'm sure there are many, many county employees who would be very grateful to also have childcare and preschools available to them. So this was not my idea, I would love to think it was. It started before I got here and I am so happy to see it through and think this is just a beautiful, beautiful way to end. Except for council reports, which are even also very beautiful. So with that, thank you, you guys are awesome. And let's start with Councilmember Castellano.
Okay. Is this the night to talk about how much I've enjoyed working with you or?
No, we've still got.
Okay, oh my gosh. All right, I'll save that eloquent speech for then. So the main things I've been up to is I co-hosted with Jemima Har from the Humboldt Arts Council, a regional arts meeting that, where we had members of the California Arts Council, members of Californians for the Arts, participating from Sacramento and LA. Really great turnout of local cultural leaders, about 60 people attended and, you know, I just want to lift up that, there's some amazing people doing really kind of groundbreaking work in our communities that is really speaking to people at the state level, so just lifting that up. I attended a Workforce Development Board meeting and a really great meeting yesterday with Economic Development Manager Swan Asbury and Amanda Khrushki from Eureka Main Street with the California Arts Council about the Eureka Cultural District. Some of you may know that was kind of an unfunded award of, for the, for Eureka, one of only 14 in the state, but there is funding in the budget and it's looking highly likely that the city of Eureka will receive, or the cultural district will receive three years of funding for activities within the cultural district. So don't want to get too excited yet, but the meeting went really well. And then I did travel and attended the Cal Cities Leaders Group Meeting in Monterey, where Cal Cities adopted advocacy priorities for the year. We did advocate for kind of infrastructure and environment and that was like almost adopted, but the, I just want to give a quick rundown of the advocacy priorities that were adopted. Protect and expand investments to prevent and reduce homelessness, increase the supply and affordability of housing while retaining local decision-making, improve public safety in California communities, and safeguard essential local revenues and support fiscal sustainability. And I, the kind of environment slash infrastructure one was, was a close, a close fifth and so the, you know, policy folks will be working on that as well in Sacramento.
Councilmember Raya.
Well, this is my last regular meeting, so we have a special meeting on the 19th and then by the 20th, I'll be sworn in to the Board of Supervisors, so I'll be here just to pass the torch figuratively. So it's been real, Eureka. I've really appreciated spending the bulk of my 30s in this office and with this team and getting things done for the community that I love so much. And so I will probably think of more eloquent words for the 20th when I do the more official torch passing, but, but this is my last full meeting and it's been quite a joy. I have a little bit of heartache about leaving Eureka and this team, even though I'm looking forward to, to new things, but we're, we're a very kind, loving, functional group of people who really like each other and are really trying our best to honor each other while getting important municipal work done and I really love the spirit of that and I will really miss each and every one of you. But I'll save more words for the 20th and just say that, so I've already, I don't get sworn in till the 20th, but I did go to a conference, the California State Association of Counties, so the sort of the counterpart to Cal Cities, but for counties, and got to meet a lot of other county supervisors and I'm, I'm one of the Policy Committee Chairs for the Coastal Cities Working Group, so some opportunity there to work with folks from the central coast and southern coast of the state on coastal priorities. So that was a pretty cool outcome and yeah, definitely learned some new things there, although there's a lot of overlap with the training for supervisors and council members, it turns out, so a lot of it, I was like, oh, yeah, I know what that is. But it was interesting to think about, you know, the, the federal and state funding streams that come to the county that don't come to the city. So that was the thing that was like, wow, this is a lot of, a lot of opportunity and responsibility that we, we don't currently, you know, have or, or get to have. So looking forward to collaborating, you know, together on all of that. Lots more to come as I get my feet under me in that role. I am also on the Board of the Climate River Renewal Corporation and so that's not a city appointment, but I, I serve in that capacity as a volunteer. And now KRC and the states of California and Oregon collectively own and operate four dams for the purpose of removing them, but we, we get to operate them for about a year, which is something that if you told me 10 years ago that I'd be part of an organization that owns four dams, I would not have believed you. So this will be an exciting journey, an unprecedented journey and really good for the region, good for fisheries, good for tribes. I, I was very much moved to tears in the decision of taking over the license. It's funny, the, the like actual thing was not very exciting, it was like the license has been transferred, but the meaningful aspects of that are huge and it'll be, it'll be union jobs, it'll be a lot of, a lot of good, good things for our region. And I think it shows some opportunities for cooperation on, on projects of that scale, which we have not seen here, but will be seeing, you know, I think we're starting to see bigger and bigger, you know, multi-agency, multiplayer projects in our region and it's an exciting time for Humboldt County and for, and for Eureka at the heart of Humboldt County. So as far as other board meetings, the Humboldt Transit Authority meeting is tomorrow morning at, at 9:00 AM at our good old HDA office, things are, things are plugging along there. That Transit Inner City Rail Capital Program Grant, the TERSIP grant that's funding the Earth Center, but also the Transit Center and, and all the hydrogen planning and building work is, is continuing to move, but I think there'll be more news on that in the, in the near future. And I'm the chair, so we'll see what happens next year. I might be seeing some of you on your boards. So anyway, I think I'll, like I said, I'll probably come up with more words for the 20th and hopefully the 19th will be less, less wordy overall, more procedural, so. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Bauer.
Thanks, yeah, I feel like I'll have a lot more to say, but come next, what, the 20th, but I feel like I didn't get, two years wasn't enough, I didn't get enough of your, both of your time and I'm sad about that, but it's, it is what it is. Yeah, I also attended the League Leaders Summit for Cal Cities, which is a 492-city organization and Councilmember Castellano already told you our advocacy priorities. I serve on the Board of Directors for the Redwood Empire, so I represent Crescent City to Point Arena, is that the furthest south probably? So I represent all of our cities and I got to fight, try and get a climate agenda into our advocacy priorities, but it didn't happen. But it was, I gotta say this, it's fascinating when you're sitting next to a council member from Sacramento who represents half a million people and guess what? The issues are exactly the same as Little Eureka, you know, and so addressing homeless issues and affordable housing and it's all, we all share the same issues regardless of what size city you live in. And it was really cool to talk to big city, city council folk and, and city managers and attorney for Sacramento, city of Sacramento, and just learn so much about how all the shared problems we have and, and potential opportunities too, so very cool. I look forward to, to working on those advocacy priorities because budgets are going to be a little tight, it looks like, next year. And it was great going to the Humboldt Library Foundation and, and hanging out with a bunch of great people, supporting the library, that was a great time. And yeah, I got a lot of meetings coming up, RCEA is coming up next, next week, and JPA and lots of stuff going on, so yeah, that's it for me, thanks.
So I just have a couple of things. Yeah, no, I'm not going to say anything about that, yeah, well, I just, I do, I'm going to say something about it anyway because I just want to, I know that we're going to talk about this later, but I just want to share my real appreciation for working with Natalie over these last eight years and there'll probably be more to be said, but we've been through hell and back, more than once, and it's just been a pleasure to walk through hell with you, so thank you and good luck in your new job, I know, right? And it hasn't all been hell, there's been a lot of really great stuff too, and I think it's really cool that we've made those great impacts in our city. And then Susan, I just appreciate you and I, I'm, what Caroline Griffith had said in her, her pitch was very true, is you were going to be a hard one to follow. I appreciate all the dedication and hard work you've put toward our city and I hope that I continue carrying that torch. And with that being said, I'm going to bring forward something that's happening now currently and that is Home for the Holidays, that is something that is happening in our city, so all holiday decor is welcome, you guys can decorate your house however you want, similar to last year. The, the judging starts December 14th or the voting, actually, and the first place prize is $500, the second place prize is $250, and then there's a mayor's choice this year, so maybe you and I can do that together, at $100. So always looking forward to bringing the fun in, in our city and really bringing community together and what a great way to do that with twinkle lights and, you know, festivities and Christmas and all of that, so I'm really looking forward to that and it should be a lot of fun. So decorate your house and registration, you can register on the website through Facebook, I believe also, and I'll post a link on my council page. I've done a lot of stuff in the last couple of weeks, but you can always find out what I do on my council page, if you're interested on Facebook or give me a call, I'm happy to tell you. And last but not least, there is a December 17th Zumba Party, 2 to 4, at the Municipal Auditorium, bringing the, bringing in the exercise before the big meals and that's always a great time, so I'd encourage you, y'all, to come out, try out our, all the things that are happening in the city, there's a lot, and check out Facebook on Eureka, City of Eureka, there's a lot of things listed there on my Facebook page, Kimberly for Eureka City Council, Ward 5, but join us, we're a community, let's work together and create a better future. I mean, that's how we do it, by getting to know each other and how better to do that than by having fun? Anyway, thank you.
Thank you, and I can't believe I forgot the Home for the Holidays pitch, so you are perfect to, to pick up where I left off.
Guess what I forgot? Can I add something? Our participatory budgeting session, so our last one is December 15th from 5:30 to 7:30, it's at the Wharfinger, it's definitely at the Wharfinger, and everyone can come and see the work that the group has done so far to make recommendations around participatory budgeting expenditures and what suite of projects will be recommended, so I'm super excited to see that and that one's open to everybody, right? So people can come and see what's going on and weigh in a little bit.
So, oh, can I ask a question about that? Will there be opportunity for public comment at that meeting or is it just going to be presentation?
All of the council will be invited and it'll be a public meeting, correct?
So public, public comment will be?
I did not have that on my radar as a public meeting.
Well, I think we can meet our sunset clause still, so I think that's the plan.
We can. We won't, I guess Zoom and those kind of options, we won't have available.
No, that was the intent, I think, to do the first few at Zoom when we had the committees and then for the last one to be an offering of pizza and people to come and hang out.
Okay, I was under the understanding it was just the committees and then they would be bringing a presentation to council later.
It'll be able to vote on by everybody, but they'll make the list of priorities.
We'll figure it out.
Yeah. We should probably talk about.
Glad, glad we talked about it.
In the last meeting with a little chaos, the penultimate, the penultimate meeting, and as I close out today's meeting, I would like to ask Assistant City Manager Powell, if she can find the gavel because I believe Mayor Bergell would like to use it when she gets in here. There you go, I've never used it, so. We'll do, no, we'll do that next week, I'll present. Okay, we'll get, I'll get, I'll use it this one time and close out the meeting.
You just use the gavel at the end of the meeting, you see?
I know. How about if I close the 19th with the gavel? Okay.
That may be a perfect option.
All right, we'll see you all in, on the 19th, bye-bye.